Welcome to this planning board meeting. We'll go ahead and adjust a few settings. We'll change the roles for our staff, for applicants, and for board members. And for attendees, you will be able to hear and see. And we'll make sure that things are beginning right at 6:00.
The Boulder Planning Board, and we are getting started at 6:12 PM. Let the record show, I'd like to welcome everyone to our second virtual planning board meeting. It looks like we have a full complement of planning board members tonight, all seven planning board members in attendance. For those of you who are on the telephone and can't see, maybe let's just go around and introduce ourselves. So I'll start with Sarah Silver.
Sarah Silver, hello.
And you could just say "I" if you want, or here, Lisa Smith.
Here.
David Ensign.
Here.
John Gerstle.
Ah, here. I had to unmute myself.
Thank you, Lupita Montoya.
Here.
And Peter Vitale.
Here.
All right, okay, so we have a full quorum. And I'd like to also introduce our moderator today, who's Sarah Huntley, who's been running the meeting up to this point. Sarah?
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate that all the planning board members were here on time, so I could get you situated. As you mentioned, we have a lot of attendees for tonight's meeting, and we're very excited that everybody's here and is going to be able to participate. These are very challenging times, and not being able to meet in person is certainly a challenge. I wanted to just acclimate attendees, members of the community, about how things are going to work this evening. So I have a list of all of you who are signed on. Zoom does not allow you to see everybody who signed on, that's just a function of the platform. But I have a complete list. As I mentioned, some of you may have signed up in advance, and I'm very, very sorry that we're having difficulty pulling that signup sheet out. So what we're going to do instead tonight is when we get to the public hearing item that you're interested in speaking about, I'm going to have you raise your hand in the platform. So I want to make sure that everybody knows how to do that. So right now, you're probably seeing, if you're on video, if you're not calling by telephone, you're probably seeing a bunch of squares. They kind of look like Brady Bunch squares. And you'll see me speaking, and the board members will all be on camera, so you can see them during the meeting. And you also see, if you move your cursor around any of those squares, there's going to be a horizontal menu that shows up at the bottom of your screen. And you've got some options in there. One is Q&amp;A, so that's the box that I told you to check on if you need to speak to me as moderator during the meeting. The other is chat. We've disabled chat tonight because we don't want people being able to create a separate record of what their perspectives and opinions are about this project. We want that all to happen on video and audio, so that everybody is privy to what's being said. We don't want to be non-transparent about this in any way. You're also going to see a button there that says "Raise Hand." Some of you have your hand raised already, but that's the button when we get to your public hearing item. If you would like to speak, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand. Then I'm going to let the chair know how many people have their hands raised, so he can decide whether we can do the full three minutes, or sometimes if we have a lot of speakers, the chair has the ability to say we're going to cut back to two minutes. If two of you are on a phone line and you both want to speak, we'll give you each either the two or three minutes, depending on what the chair has allocated. So don't worry about that when we get to you, we'll adjust accordingly. If you are in a pseudonym, I'm not going to be able to call on you, but if you have a phone number and we weren't unable to connect, I will go ahead and call on you. If you're on the phone, the way you're going to raise your hand is you're going to press *9 on your telephone, and that will have a blue hand go up, so that I know that you want to speak, and we will unmute you. I'm going to go over just quickly a couple of rules of online meetings that this planning board has adopted. There's a set of rules just for the whole meeting in general, and then there's a separate set of rules, more specifics, about when we get to the quasi-judicial portions of the meeting, because we have two public hearings tonight. So I'm just going to share my screen briefly to go over those, so that we're all on the same page as we get started. There with me for one moment. For those of you who are on video, you'll be able to see my screen in a moment. For those of you who are on phone, I'm going to go over the rules verbally, so that you are not left out of that conversation. Okay, so the reason we have these rules is we're trying to strike a balance between meaningful transparent engagement that we've all come to expect in Boulder when we're in person, and also online security. We have had some unfortunate situations where people probably outside our community have been disrupting our meetings with racism and pornographic images, so we're trying to avoid that for everybody's comfort and ability to participate in a comfortable setting. So the meeting has been called to conduct the business of the city of Boulder. Activities that disrupt, delay, or otherwise interfere with the meeting are prohibited, and the chair can have me mute somebody if they are not following those rules. The time for speaking or asking questions may be limited. As I mentioned, tonight you'll have two or three minutes. Each person shall register using your real name, so if there's a pseudonym, I will not be able to call on you. No video will be permitted except for city officials, employees, and invited speakers or presenters. You'll be able to participate, but you'll participate by voice. Anyone violating these rules, the chair can have me mute them. We're not going to enable the chat function, but we are going to use the Q&amp;A tonight for technical online platform-related questions, so questions about the Zoom platform, not about the planning process. And only the hosts and the individuals designated by the host will be permitted to share their screen during this meeting. So those are the rules that will apply the whole time that we're together this evening. Then we have one other set of rules that the attorneys have asked me to pull up that are specific to the fact that these are quasi-judicial hearings. So I'm just going to go over those very quickly as well, and again, I'll read them out, because some people might be on the telephone, and we want to make sure everybody can participate. So an agreement was already reached between the applicant and the city to have this hearing electronically. The hearing is open to the public and subject to the adequate technology, so the technology that we're using tonight, which I'm going to tell you right away, is not perfect, but it's the best way we have for letting a large number of people participate. We did post-notice requirements. We are making technological accommodations by allowing people who have questions to be able to participate by telephone. I am going to, because you can't chat with me as the moderator using the Q&amp;A if you're calling on the telephone, I'm also going to give you my cellphone number right now. So if you have a question for me as a facilitator or moderator, again, not about the substance of tonight, you may text with me. My text number is 720-908-5722. 720-908-5722. And again, that's our effort to try to make sure the people who are on the telephone can also participate fully in this meeting tonight. Hearing procedures. Any documentary evidence had to be provided to the board via email at least 48 hours in advance in order to be posted on the webpage. I've already had somebody this evening asked to be able to submit a PDF, and I've encouraged that person to send it to the board and that asked that it be made part of the formal minutes of the meeting. Applicants will be allowed to speak to the application for 15 minutes. We have quite a few applicants for both items this evening. I'll be making you a panelist, so that you can mute and unmute yourselves when we get to your point of the meeting. City staff will be allowed to speak to its recommendations for 10 minutes. The applicant or staff may request additional time. We have some complicated issues tonight, so that's up to the discretion of the chair. Other persons wishing to testify will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. It may be two minutes, depending on how medieval. We're unable to pool time during this meeting per the planning board's rules. Board members, staff, and applicants will not be using the chat features or looking at the Q&amp;A. Really, that's just for you to be able to communicate with me. After the hearing has closed, applicants do get three minutes in order to respond or rebut anything that was said during the testimony. And in order to accurately record board member votes, since some people can't see what's happening, the board chair will call for a roll call vote on any motions that are made during this hearing, so that everybody can hear what's going on. Okay, I think that's it in terms of the official rules. If you, I can turn the meeting back over to you, Harmon, if you want to get us started.
Sure. So now that we've done our call to order, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Cindy, we don't have any minutes, do we, for this meeting? Okay, thank you very much.
No.
Appreciate that, yeah. And then our next item is public participation. So public participation, we are going to allow for three minutes per speaker. Do we have any people signed up for public participation?
We do. So this is, as a reminder, this is for participating, speaking on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So if you want to speak on Spine Road application, don't raise your hand at this portion of the meeting. If you want to speak on BVCP, don't raise your hand at this portion of the meeting. When we get to those portions, I'll give you an opportunity to raise your hand. It does look like we have one raised hand, and I'm hoping this person understands that they're here for public participation. Actually, we have two, so I'm going to go ahead and call on them. Cindy, could you please bring up the time clock, so that we can all just make sure that we're keeping track of how much time we have this evening? The first person I'm going to call on, it looks like, is Estepa, and the second person is Lynn. So Lynn, if you just want to queue up, I need to get back to my participant screen, and I'll be unmuting you in just a moment. Okay, Estepa took their hand down, so I'm assuming that that person has realized they'd like to speak for one of the other public hearings. Lynn, you're unmuted. Lynn, we can hear you if you'd like to go ahead and speak, please. Lynn, you need to unmute yourself.
I wouldn't assume anything. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I wouldn't assume anything, Sarah. You don't know why that person blocked themselves off, but I can tell you this, there's one person signed up for planning board, and it doesn't surprise me at all. This anti-democracy stuff has got to stop, and it's got to stop now. You've got to clean up your website. I know Cindy's working hard on this, but you've got live instructions on your website for everything. And probably, well, you've got hundreds of participants tonight. I can't tell who I'm speaking to, I can't tell who's out there. Why not? Because I'm not live? Excuse me. Because of COVID? Excuse me. We're not going to have a situation where, because of COVID, we lose our democracy in this town. No way, not under my watch. Now, I spent the last two weeks, actually, two weeks writing you a letter, probably 25 pages long, about public process and democracy. Not because I love to spend my time that way, because the only time I like in Boulder is the spring. It's, I'm from Seattle, and it's much too extreme temperatures here for me. But I've done it because some, somebody has to do it. And I've spent up three nights, all night long, writing those letters, taking the testimony off of council meetings, and various boards that I follow, which are many, which are rad, which are standard sub meetings, landmark, which is planning.
Lynn, we're having difficulty hearing you. You may need to move closer to your mic. You were nice and clear before.
Pretty slow. I follow a lot of boards. All the boards have different rules, different expectations. It's so mind-boggling what you can and can't be, that I'd be surprised in the future if anyone participates. And as far as the far future, who's going to even know who they're speaking to? Because you can't have video. And you know what? I don't care what I see on the video screen. That can't hurt me. It's not a physical violence. It's more, much more important to me to have my democratic and due process rights, to know people in the community, which I can't see anymore, because I'm trapped inside of Zoom. You know? This needs to be compensated for by the city of Boulder, by planning. So I can't even have time for my subconscious discussions, can I? Because I'm dealing with public progress. But I hope those hundred people that are out there, whoever they are, because I don't know who they are, do I? And I should. They should be up here. Like, on every Zoom I'm on, their video windows are up there, their names are up there. So why can't they be with us? City of Boulder. Why? International Zooms I'm on, Public Utilities Commission Zooms I'm on. This is the city of Boulder. This is draconian. Bye.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Lynn. I have two more people who have raised their hand to speak. We have somebody named Yanfang Gao, who would like to speak. I'm going to allow you to speak.
I'm muted now, okay. Okay, thank you. So I have two concerns about this project. So firstly...
Excuse me, sir. What project are you referring to?
Oh, the spine.
The development.
4775 Development Project.
Okay, so that's a public hearing, and we're going to take public comment with that public hearing after the presentation is completed. This is general public participation, and it's only for items that aren't on the agenda. So if you have something general to speak about, you can speak at this time. Otherwise, you have to speak after the public hearing.
We'll be happy to call on you when we get to that, that part of the hearing.
Okay, so general concern, okay.
Okay.
General concern is the plan.
Hold on. Okay, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, just a general concern is the, about the plan change, is that, why there is a plan, basically zoning change? Because looks to me, overall, for Boulder, as a city of general comments, that we need more business, because, because the real estate development will not bring more business. So I think the zoning should not change so easily. And even that land, I can say, I can see that some of the land is there for some time, quite some time, but I believe we should consider more development on the business side.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, that is, that is just a general comment, not related to that development plan. And later on, I already signed up for that, the specific project, so I will speak later after that public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Okay, we have one more person who appears to wish to speak for the public, actually, we have two now. At some point, you may want to cut off the number of hands that we can have raised for this session, Harmon, just because it's going to be a long evening. But I'm going to call on Michael Day, and then we have Adam Lee up next. Michael, you are alive.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great, so this will be very quick. One of the, one of the things that does concern me a little bit about the Zoom format, which I use extensively professionally as part of just my, my work, yeah, I imagine that the, the fact that we can't see who's actually participating is a result of, of the form of the platform, you know, kind of the configuration that we're using for this particular meeting. I understand the concerns that, that you guys are trying to address in terms of, you know, folks participating in the meeting in inappropriate and unconstructive ways. However, at a in-person meeting, one of the things that does occur at those types of meetings is that if we were all in the same room, and we were having the opportunities to speak as I am having now, then it is easy for the other individuals that are in the meeting to reach out to me immediately following the meeting in order to act constructively on our shared interests. And so I'm not sure if there are, and if there are not, I would like there to be ways to ensure that if we would like our contact information shared with the other people that attended this evening's event, so that we can ensure that those further conversations and in further actions to make the, the best decisions for our community as a whole are available, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks for that comment.
Thank you. Okay, last person, actually, one more, so it's Adam Lee and then Steve Pagnota. Adam, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to unmute. You should be able to unmute yourself now and speak.
Thank you. This will be very quick as well. I wanted to just echo what Michael was saying. Some of the issue that I have, specific to not just this format, what's, what's on the dock for tonight, but everything that comes with things that you're discussing now and in the future with Zoom calls, is it is only for the technology savvy. So you look at people that are within the spine area, a lot of them are the older generation that do not knew, do not know how to use Zoom. So they would be happy to go somewhere to a meeting specifically, but do not know how to use the technology, and that is a huge hurdle for a lot of these people, and a frustration for many, many of them. I've gotten this over the last multiple weeks, and I just wanted to echo what Michael was saying about that, and also kind of let you know that that is a giant hurdle that many people in the neighborhood have already expressed and are very concerned about. That's it.
Thank you, Adam. And then we have Steve Pagnota, the last person on the list. Steve, you're on the air. You may need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Well, I think this might tie into a few of the topics. I have to agree that this is a, I appreciate that there's an opportunity for us to communicate via Zoom, but I do think it causes too many obstacles for a fully democratic interaction and fully public interaction, though I very much appreciate the effort. On a larger picture, the need for all of us to be able to communicate as a democracy, democracy is a, is essential in an effective manner, and especially when we're dealing with things so important as, as, as our environment. So what I would like to propose is a complete moratorium on all new building and construction for the city of Boulder. I think that, that we've lost our way as a community. I think we're in the position now where we're the stewards of, of an incredible and extraordinary place that draws people from all around the world, but we rapidly are running the risk of losing this and betraying the legacy, the beauty, the ecosystems and the integrity of what Boulder is. It's becoming a place that's really unrecognizable. There's been a nonstop rampant onslaught of developments, and we've, we've lost our way, and I think we need to just reboot, stop, take a moment, take, take a lot of time, and, and try to honor the legacy that is Boulder in our ecosystems, in our tradition, in our legacy. Doesn't matter if you're at Pearl and 30th Street, or any of the new developments that are happening around all the suburbs throughout the town. It's becoming an unrecognizable place, visibly, environmentally, and I'm sorry to say also spiritually. I support sustainable and creative repurposing of existing buildings to address housing, business, and financial needs that the city encounter are going to be facing in extreme measure. But we can be creative, and we can be sustainable, and we can honor our legacy and our history and build a better future, a more balanced future for the city of Boulder and all the generations to come. We need to honor that, just as the people before us have honored that for us. They gave us an incredible place, we need to, we need to respect that and put a moratorium on all future building and construction.
Thank you, Steve. Harmon, we have one more individual with their hand raised. Would you like me to go ahead and let that person speak?
Yeah, let's let him speak, and then that'll be the last one.
Okay, so it's Rose Goodman. Rose, I'm going to bring you onto the air. You should be able to speak. You may have to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. I completely agree with what Steve was saying. I'm not going to go into details about the spine stuff until we bring that up, and I'll try to keep this quick. But I also completely agree that it's kind of unacceptable for us to be making such important decisions like this when people are not able to be well represented. I understand that it is not anyone's fault. Obviously, we didn't plan for the pandemic to occur, but I would also possibly ask if there is any way to postpone any major or final decision-making about such important, such important decisions that need to be made. I think communication is great, and Zoom can be used for communication, but especially for people that are not able to access Zoom, or people who are not good with technology or not able to phone in. All those people are not represented where they might have been if we were able to meet in person. And so I think it's kind of unacceptable to really go through with all of these final official decision-making things whenever we're not even able to accurately represent the population. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so just as a, as a comment, Sarah Huntley, you know, I heard what Adam and Michael said about, you know, having additional opportunities for members of the public to communicate with each other around the meeting, and maybe we could look into something, or IT could look into something around, you know, potentially breakout rooms that are open for 15 minutes after the close of a public hearing, so that attendees might be able to share their thoughts, but outside of the public meeting record, kind of like a virtual version of downstairs below planning board chambers.
Right. That's definitely something I think we might be able to accommodate. I would need to talk to our attorneys about it. Also, you need, Zoom requires you to have a staff person then running that breakout room, but it's not an insurmountable problem. I'm definitely hearing the concerns here. We're doing the best we can with the platform we have, but there's probably room for some improvements. So let me take that back to our city attorney and our staff to see if we can figure something out. One thing specifically that I heard from attendees is that they really would like to know who else is on the call. So one thing I want to tell you, if you're on the video, you're not on the phone, you're watching this on your computer, when I call on somebody to speak and I bring them on the air, their name does appear as one of the boxes, so you can get a record of who's speaking. But there will also be probably interest in who else is on the call, even if they don't speak. Zoom does not allow us to capture an attendee list, but what I did for another meeting last night is when we appear to be at the highest number of attendees, I'm going to take photographs of the names on the attendee list, and we will publish a list of the part... take photographs of the names on the attendee list and we will publish a list of the participants on this call on the website with the video record for this meeting. It doesn't give contact information. I don't have contact information, but at least people would be able to see who else was participating in the meeting. And that's a workaround that I'm happy to try to do, even though the Zoom platform doesn't do it for us.
That's really great. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. Okay, so I'm going to close public participation and move on to discussion of dispositions, planning board, call-ups and continuations. And tonight, we have just one call-up item. It is the final plat to subdivide an existing 39,501 square foot lot located at 2005 Upland Avenue. It's a three lots suitable for residential development, 2005 Upland Avenue subdivision, case number TEC 20180030. The existing home is proposed to remain on Lot 1. This approval is subject to potential call-up on or before May 26, 2020, and the preliminary plat was approved through case number LUR 20180042. Is there any planning board member interested in calling this matter up or who just has a question about it? Okay, it looks like we're not going to call that up going once, going twice. Okay, we're not going to call that up. Now we'll go to our public hearing items and I'm going to, I'm going to read this public hearing item title and then I'm going to talk a little bit about, we're, we're going to do some disclosures, if any, talk about what a concept plan is. And then I'm going to turn it over to Charles Farrow. And Charles, at that point, after we talk about what a concept plan is, I'd like it if you would look into the notice matter that has come up with this item, okay? Okay, great. So first of all, does anybody have any disclosures that they would like to make, ex parte communications or otherwise that they would like to bring up at this point around the, the agenda item here, which is concept plan review and comment? It's a request for citizen staff and planning input on our proposal to develop three vacant lots at 4775 and 4649 Spine Road totaling 9.8 acres with a new residential development with 268 residential units and 10 buildings. Development is proposed to include 25% permanently affordable housing, 68 units on the southernmost lot. Proposed residential units consist of studio, one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom apartments. This is case number LUR 2020 quadruple O three. So do any planning board members have any ex parte disclosures or other disclosures that they need to make? Okay, I'm seeing one hand up. John Gerstl?
Yeah, so I, I'd just like to say that I've been there many times and I've talked with people that I've met during the visits and others who are interested, but I feel that I can deal with this in an objective and fair manner.
Okay, great. And before I turn it over to Charles, I just want to talk about what a concept plan is. I think it's very important. We have 191 people on this call and there's been, I don't know how many emails we've received so far. So, so I want to make sure people know what we're doing here tonight as a planning board. Many of the emails that we received expressed concern, even alarm about the concept review in front of us tonight. We've received comments beseeching us to please don't do this and we've gotten requests that planning board not allow the proposed development and that we've seen complaints that the plans don't provide information on construction access and schedules. We've seen characterizations of the concept plan as a request for a zoning change. We've had a request that the planning board produce a complete construction plan with noise ordinance analysis timetable and traffic study. I want to point out that this is a concept review. If the project moves forward to site plan review, to site review, these and other requirements would be applied for sure. However, they're not germane to a concept plan review. They're not part of the application requirement. So again, what's a concept plan? A concept plan should be a preliminary plan for the development of a site with sufficient accuracy to be used for discussing the plan's conformance with our adopted ordinances, plans and the policies of Boulder. The concept plan provides the public, the city manager and the planning board an opportunity to offer input in the formative stages of development. The purpose of concept plan review is to take a step to determine the general development plan for a site, including without limitation, the land uses, the arrangement of them, general circulation patterns, characteristics, methods of encouraging use of alternative transportation modes, areas of the site to be preserved from development, general architectural characteristics, any special height and view corridor limitations, environmental preservation and enhancement concepts and other factors as needed to carry out the objectives of the code and our plans and, and other city requirements. So this is a step that's intended to give an applicant the opportunity to get comments from the planning board early in the development process as to whether the concept plan addresses the city requirements as set forth in ordinances and plans and policies. The comments that we make tonight are not binding. They're meant to inform a subsequent application for site review. Concept plan review and comment doesn't relieve an applicant of the burden to seek any approvals for elements of the plan that require review and approval under the code. And in this case, a project of this size would be required to do both a site review and a use review with both, which both require planning board hearings and approval. So, you know, that's, that's really what we're here for tonight. And, and with that, I'll turn it over to Charles. Charles is our planning manager. Thank you, Charles. Go ahead.
Great. Thanks so much. Sloane, can you pop the PowerPoint, please?
Are you working on it? Give me one minute. Can you see that?
Yep. Great. Thanks. So good evening, Chair Members of the Board, Charles Farrow, Development Review Manager here at the city. So as you know, a few members of the public brought to our attention that the posting signs had been removed from the Celestial Seasonings property. So before we can begin with our agenda item tonight, I'd like to talk for a moment about our posting requirements and what happens in these types of situations from a regulatory standpoint. So first, our code requires that written notice be sent to adjacent property owners within 600 feet of the property 10 days, at least 10 days in advance of the hearing. So notices were mailed to the property owners within 600 feet of the site in January upon initial submittal of the application, and that was to about 566 property owners. Next, the hearing has to be published in a local newspaper at least 10 days prior to the hearing, which has also occurred earlier this month. And then finally, the property needs to be posted. The applicant was issued posting signs by staff in January, again, upon initial application and for whatever reason, likely when the signs were removed. So this was brought to our attention about a week and a half ago by some neighbors and new posting signs were issued last Saturday, which was May 16th. So the, the site had been reposted. So aside from the required notices, I'd also like to note that the full application package has been posted to the city's website since January. There's been numerous postings about this on various social media platforms. Sloane, can you advance the slide, please? Great, thanks. So these things happen from time to time and the code has a provision to address these types of situations. So in times in of an omitted or defective public notice, the board needs to make a finding as to whether or not the missing signs impaired the surrounding property owner's ability to participate in the public review process. So before we can begin this evening, the board would need to make a finding based on this criterion. So if the board finds that the public's ability to participate has been impacted, the hearing would need to be delayed for a minimum of 10 days to allow the property to be reposted again. So that said, Helen and I are here for any questions. I'm happy to turn it over to the board for discussion.
Charles. All right. So why don't we have that? Why don't we have board discussion around this? I'm going to pop up my participant screen and imagine several planning board members probably have a question. So can you please use the hand, the raise hand function so that I can call on you in the order that you raised your hand? I'm going to start with David.
Okay, well, I don't have a question so much as just, I wanted to mention that we had this come up the last time about, it was almost three, well, it was September 7th of 2017. I went to look that up because I was just kind of curious about what we did. And at, at the time, it was very similar situation where the sign was put up and then was missing. So we did actually vote unanimously to go, that, to accept the omission that, that the public's ability to participate in the review process had not been negatively impacted in any significant way. One thing I did want to bring up was that in Crystal Gray's honor, since she was on the board at the time, she reminded us that we have asked several times, actually, in city council annual letters that we consider amending through ordinance the notification procedures to notify renters as well as property owners. So I'd like to just acknowledge that again and just make that part of this meeting's record that we, we have indeed followed up on Crystal Gray's recommendation and, and recommended as a planning board that we look into notifying renters, but that still is an outstanding thing to address. So those are my comments.
Thanks, David. I see Sarah's hand is up. Sarah Silver?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what David Ensign just said. I had just typed out the very same sentence and I really hope that the planning board and staff will move forward on this proposal to, from an equity perspective, to make sure that we are contacting renters, not just property owners.
Yeah, I don't see any other hands. I'm going to jump in and just say, you know, without having studied any of the legalities of this, you know, it occurs to me that, you know, we're a city that has a water utility and a sewer utility and we have the names and addresses of everybody who has a contract for service at their service address, which would include owners and renters. And, you know, it's, it seems to me like we may be able to make this happen in a lot easier way than, than it would have been in the past because most of the, the folks who are receiving these utility services have also provided their emails. And as we relook at the way government does business, especially in these times, budgetary crunches and, and lack of funds to be putting first class stamps on or postcard stamps on notifications, you know, we might want to consider looking into whether we can start notifying by emailing who's in, in a service area. Lisa?
Um, yeah, so we don't, I, I agree with everything that's been said on notifying renters and we don't even need to go through utilities. You can just go through the post office and draw geographical boundary and say, I would like this piece of mail delivered to every address in there. I think logistical pieces of it, which shouldn't keep us from doing it, would just be cost and then staff time to do something like that because mailings are involved. But it seems, yeah, from, from an equity perspective and also given how high of a percentage of renters we have in the city of Boulder, I, I think we probably should be already noticing those folks. So I, I agree.
Any other comments? Okay, is there anybody who, who feels, Lisa, can you take your hand down, please? Is there anybody else who feels like they, they cannot make the finding that the notice defect did not impair a surrounding property owner's ability to participate in the review process? Okay, then, then I'll make a, well, I'll call for a motion. Does anybody want to make a motion around this defect in notice so that we can go forward?
Sure, I can make a motion if.
Okay, David?
I would move that since the notice was posted, according to testimony and the proper notification procedures were followed, the board finds that any omission or defect in the notice has not impaired a surrounding property owner's ability to participate in the public review process.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Sarah Silver seconds. The motion is by David Ensign. Discussion on the motion? I guess I'd just like to say for the record, you know, that we don't know how long the sign was up before it came down. We do know that the sign was up for the last five days since it was reinstalled on site on the 16th and today's the 21st. And, and as Charles pointed out, there were websites dedicated to this, Next Door Groups, and we've received, I don't know, it's unprecedented, but a huge amount of public input from this. So, you know, I think that as we make a finding that any defect in, in the sign that was posted on the site didn't impair the surrounding property owner's ability to participate in the review process, I just wanted to get that into the record. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, well, we can't do all in favor. Can I do a roll call vote? Sarah Silver?
Aye.
Lisa Smith?
Aye.
David Ensign?
Aye.
Peter Vitale?
Aye.
John Gerstl?
Aye.
And Lupita Montoya?
Aye.
Harmon Zuckerman is an aye. So board votes unanimously to make the finding and we'll go forward and hear the concept review.
Great. Thanks very much. I will turn it over to Sloane Walbert. She's been the case manager on this particular.
Charles, before you do that, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I can't chat with the chair because they're not looking at the chat box for their rules. We have gotten some feedback from a couple of residents that power is out in a neighborhood in Niwot where there might be people who are waiting to participate. They're on their phones, which are going to die soon. So I don't know if the planning board wants to adjust anything. I just wanted, I, I promised to make that technical issue, make you and, and the attorney on this meeting aware of that, to see if you want to adjust anything accordingly.
Okay.
It's the Niwot Somerset neighborhood and there's one person who is attempting to speak for a couple of the items.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, you know, we're going to go forward with this. I think if, you know, if we take a, a look at this as a, this is a natural issue or, you know, an issue like a traffic jam or a car accident, which, you know, would keep somebody who was trying to drive to a planning board meeting to make a public comment from being able to make a public comment. So thanks for bringing that up, but, but I think we need to move forward.
I understand. I just made the commitment to make you aware.
Thank you.
So now I will turn it over to Sloane Walbert, who has served as the case manager on this particular application.
Okay, thanks, Charles, and good evening to everyone. As Harmon described, tonight's application before you is a concept plan review to develop three vacant lots with a new residential development with 268 residential units and 10 buildings. And it is proposed to include 25% permanently affordable unit with units, which is 68 units. So just as a quick overview tonight, I will quickly go over the purpose of concept plan, describe the existing context, cover the proposed concept and then raise a key issue for a discussion. So as Harmon described, the purpose of concept plan review is to receive feedback from city staff, the public, and the planning board and potentially city council on a proposal early in the development review process. And it is intended to be a conversation. There will be no formal action. So moving on to the regulatory context, the site is designated as light industrial in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. And as part of the 2015 major update to the plan, the light industrial land use designation was updated to change the types of uses that are typically found within this designation and to add that residential and other complementary uses would be encouraged in appropriate locations. The property is zoned industrial manufacturing, which is described as industrial manufacturing areas primarily used for research, development, manufacturing and service industrial uses in buildings on large lots. Again, residential uses and other complementary uses may be allowed in appropriate locations. And the appropriateness of the residential use would be done through a use review concurrent with the site review application. And there are specific criteria that would need to meet. So just moving on to some context, the property is not within a sub-area plan. However, the Economic Sustainability Strategy describes Gunbarrel as sort of an evolving area with new housing, retail, brewery, restaurant uses and some hotel development. And the plan notes that residential is encouraged in the area to offset the high amount of jobs that are in the area. So the area is eclectic in character. There are industrial areas to the north, show that, and east, which were annexed into the city in 1977, which is both along. which is both along Longbow Court and Longbow Drive. There is an established industrial business park to the northeast, which was developed in the 1980s. There are also some medium-density multifamily developments, also built in the 1980s, which are located to the east and to the southeast. Those are the Powderhorn condominiums and the Hunter Creek condominiums. There's also some single-family areas to the south. You can see in these images, which are partially as Orchard Creek or Orchard Courts and Brandywine Courts. And those were developed in the 1990s. This is a view of Spine Road adjacent to the site. So the site is part of the Celestial Seasonings PUD, Planned Unit Development. And the concept plan review was not required, but the applicant has voluntarily undergone the process to gather feedback before they move forward with a site review application. This is a view of Celestial Seasonings to the west. So in terms of previous reviews which apply to this property, there's sort of a long history of city reviews, starting in 1982, which is when the site was annexed and planned as part of the larger Celestial Seasonings PUD. That PUD established the headquarters facilities and then the future industrial sites, which would be developed separately. And then later in the 1980s, office buildings were approved along Spine Road, which include these sites. Obviously, those were never developed. And at that time, a special review was approved to allow office uses in an industrial zone. Most recently, in 2010, a site review amendment was approved to remove Lot 1 of the subdivision from the PUD and add it to the Valley Lab COVIDian Medtronic PUD to the north, which allowed them to construct a new office building and parking structure. So as you can see, the site is undeveloped and contains pretty limited vegetation and is relatively flat. There's an extensive prairie dog colony, both on the subject property and also throughout the PUD area as a whole. There has been, as was discussed in the public comment, a lot of commentary and assurances from Celestial Seasonings that this would be an ecological park for prairie dogs. However, there was never any formal agreement with the city to that regard. And I would just note at this point that if prairie dogs didn't need to be relocated or if lethal control needed to be used, they would need to go through the separate process through the city and meet certain criteria. So moving on to the concepts, as I stated, it is a multifamily residential development on three lots with 268 residential units. There are 369 parking spaces proposed in both surface parking and as tuck-under. I believe there's also some carports. The mix is studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three, and some three-bedroom units. They would be for rent. And there would also be leasing and amenity space to serve both the north area and the south area. And it is proposed to include that 25% permanently affordable, which is 68 units, and that would be on that southernmost lot. And just in terms of site design and building design, I'm just going to cover this pretty high level and leave it to the applicant to go into the details. But the design is to follow the pattern established by the PUD with access from existing private internal streets, which have already been constructed. Those are Zinger Street and Sleepy Time Drive. It would utilize a full movement access point on Spine Road. Buildings are oriented on the streets to engage the pedestrian experience with parking internal to each developed lot. And the areas across Zinger Street to the west would remain undeveloped as part of the Celestial Seasonings PUD. So just in terms of architecture and building design, the buildings are proposed to be two to three stories. And they are proposed to sort of step down to Spine Road to meet some of that, the development that's existing to the east. And the buildings are less than the allowable 40 feet in height. And the style is contemporary with flat roofs. So the key issue for discussion, as identified by staff, is whether the concept plan is consistent with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the comprehensive plan, which would also be one of the criteria as part of the site review. So as identified by staff, the proposal is found to be consistent with many of those goals and objectives, particularly around permanently affordable housing. It's also consistent in terms of a compact development pattern and enhanced design aspects of the site. In general, the project does offer a mix of housing types at various prices and sizes. And it does help to address that jobs-housing balance that's articulated in the comprehensive plan. There were some aspects of the development that staff identified as needing further consideration or more analysis. In terms of the light industrial area land use designation and intent, when that was changed in 2015, the focus was really on East Boulder. So I, it is allowed per the land use code, but we need to do some analysis to make sure that it's meeting that intent of that land use designation. And the preservation of historic resources is a mistake. Sorry about that. There's nothing on the site. And they will need to take a look at some of the parking and open space design to make sure that they're utilizing the site appropriately and providing appropriate open space for the residents. There is a policy about preserving native ecosystems. And so in terms of the prairie dog habitat, they would have to do some analysis there. And also was identified that they'll have to demonstrate that the existing transportation infrastructure can handle the extra amount of traffic and some analysis on what sort of improvements they would have to make. So that's all I have. And as always, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody on planning board, let me pull up the participant screen. Okay, it looks like, John, you've got a question. John's hands up.
Yeah. What can you tell us about the the commitment made by Celestial Seasonings regarding the prairie dogs? There's been a number of references to that in the material we've received. And it's unclear to me who committed what to whom.
Yeah, we do have Val Matheson sort of waiting in the lobby if you have prairie dog questions. But my understanding is that there was a letter in the Daily Camera and there's a sign posted on the property stating that it's an ecological park. But we've done a lot of research and there was never any formal agreement or conversation with the city about that. So in terms of a regulatory context, there's nothing that we need to review this against beyond our typical lethal control permit or relocation permits that we would review and issue if necessary.
So so as far as the city is concerned, that's that's not an issue. Is that correct?
Well, Sarah, would you please let Val Matheson into the participants so that she can address that question?
Yes, let me do that right now.
Okay, thank you. John, did you have other questions? And we could.
Yeah. The other question I had was with respect to what happens to the land west of the proposed project, where you you made some comment about that remaining undeveloped. But I'm wondering what sort of commitment is there in the long term regarding that land?
Well, there are very specific developments restrictions in the PUD. So they'd have to, if they were ever to expand the manufacturing facility or develop there, they would have to show that they need those very specific metrics for the PUD. At this point, there's no intent to develop that. But we haven't done an analysis on the adjacent property.
But the PUD allows them to move ahead with what they're proposing now without any additional preservation of land?
No, there was, there was no discussion of preserving natural resources in the PUD. It was always intended to be either be industrial or office uses on these properties. And with the more recent changes to the light industrial district to encourage housing, they are consistent with the intent.
Thank you.
We do have Val here if you want to.
I can pick up on that last question about, and Sloan hit the nail on the head. And I'm referring to John's question about the, any agreements or MOUs with the city. So my understanding, similar to Sloan, is that the landowner made a commitment to the community and advertised that or made it publicly known by both posting the commitments in the camera and putting a sign on the property. But there wasn't any agreement made with the city or anything binding with the city.
I see. So so if if anyone were to try and hold them to that, that that's not a city issue, it's it's.
Correct. Correct. The city would have no tools to to hold them to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then Sarah?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, I was struck by the analysis about Boulder Valley Comp Plan Policy 2.1, about the focus for infill was in industrial general areas and not in industrial manufacturing areas. And you referenced that a bit, Sloan. Can you just go a little deeper into that and explain to us what implications there might be for a proposal that is in fact in IM and not IG?
Sure. So a couple of things. In the site review, one of the site review criteria is that they are consistent with the comprehensive plan on balance. So we would have to make a finding on that in site review. However, the land use code is, this isn't allowed use. And they, and when you read the description of the light industrial and use designation, it does appear that housing is an allow, you know, it was anticipated. Just the caveat to that is, I think, in 2015, when when we made those changes, it wasn't really anticipated that it would be this type of site. And there is some language about preserving spaces for manufacturing uses. So at this point, we're really just identified that as an issue and we would have to do more analysis at the site review stage.
Okay, well, that's helpful. So that's something that will come back up in site review. Is that correct? It'll come back up in site review?
Yeah.
Okay, and then can you, I'm a little confused by the PUD, which is an agreement, and by the proposed intensity standards that exist for residential, residential intensity in an IM zone. And you laid out, you gave us a graph, I think it was Figure 6, that said, here is the, here's the intensity that's allowed in these three parcels under the PUD. But you didn't give us a way to, there was no comparison between what's in the PU, allowed under the PUD and what's potentially allowed under in the industrial manufacturing residential density or intensity. Can you please compare and contrast for us so that we have a sense of what is being asked of, what's being asked?
Sure. So in the site review, they would have to meet the land use code and the restrictions in the PUD. In this case, residential uses in industrial zones, buildings with residential uses are not subject to a floor area restriction. So the land use code is not going to, there's no comparison to be made in this case because if there was no PUD, they wouldn't have a floor area restriction. They would simply need to meet some open space standards in terms of private open space and then 40% continue contiguous open space for the use of the residents. So the PUD restrictions are just an additional limitation that they'll have to meet. There's no comparison in the land use code to be made. If this was an office building or an industrial building, they would have to meet separate intensity standards.
But the, so the PUD does not, the PUD contains intensity standards, but those intensity standards are only for manufacturing or industrial sites?
No, so the PUD still applies. There is no comparison to be made in the land use code because buildings that are residential in nature do not have a floor area restriction.
Okay, so then, let me, let me, let me rephrase the question.
Okay.
Just give us a visual of what the PUD intensity standards would actually allow.
I'm not sure I can do that on the spot, but that's something we can look at at site review.
I think it'd be helpful to get a sense of how much smaller or bigger or similar what the PUD allows versus what's being requested under the zoning, the districts. It just would be helpful to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Sarah, if I may chime in, under the site review criteria that would apply if this moved forward in a site review application, you would be looking at whether or not the height of the building, the size of the building, the bulk, and so forth were compatible with the surrounding area. So you have discretion over what those buildings will look like in that regard.
During, during site review?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, David?
I just did a back-of-the-envelope calculation preparing for this on the FAR that applies to IM. And this is, I can, of course, speak for the planning department, but just since I did that, it looked to me like you could build somewhere on the order of 171,000 square feet of building on the site at maximum FAR. But I don't know what the square footage is of this proposal total. So I assume it's probably less than 171,000, but anyway.
Okay, David, that would be a good question to keep for after the applicant presentation. Or maybe, Peter, you're listening, you could, you could give us that answer if you have it during the applicant presentation. Do I have any other questions of staff from planning board? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant. And and actually, I, looking at Peter Weber, the applicant, I have to make a disclosure. I am part of a development team in a project in another county where the architect of record is Peter Weber for Coburn. And I'm going to disclose that information, but I'm not going to recuse myself because I don't think that that has any bearing on my ability to objectively review this concept plan review tonight. So Peter, you have 15 minutes.
Thanks. I think Andy was actually going to kick us off and then I'll, and then I'll dive in.
Andy, you have 15 minutes.
Andy's calling in from the telephone. Andy, can you unmute yourself? You may need to press star six in order to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, and you, can you identify yourself for the record, Andy?
Yeah, hi, this is Andy Allison with Allison Holdings, 335 Oakwood Place, Boulder, Colorado.
Thank you.
Good evening. Once again, it's Andy Allison, and I'm going to go to, go in to spend a minute or so here introducing the team and the project. This team consists of a company, my company, Allison Holdings, my partner Matt Shilt with SRG, and our architects from Coburn. Allison Holdings has developed and owns over 400 affordable units in the city of Boulder. I can tell you from daily direct experience, we have a huge affordable housing crisis in our community. A lot has changed in the world in the last few months. But the need for housing, affordable housing, has not changed in Boulder. Our team has been working together for 20-plus years in Boulder. And our main goal is to create and provide tremendous mixed-income communities with onsite affordable housing. When I placed this property under contract, I believe we could accomplish those goals. Our current project, which is just completing construction, is Diagonal Crossing. Our current project, which is just completing construction, is Diagonal Crossing, where we are delivering 105 onsite affordable units. We donated land for the new Meals on Wheels facility, the new Studio Arts building, and we are funding a new Bridge House Cafe. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Schilt, and then Pete Weber from Coburn's gonna take it the rest of the way. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy. This is Matthew Schilt, 5037 West 34th Avenue, Denver, Colorado. Matthew Schilt with the Sears Regis Group, a national multifamily development and investment platform with a local Colorado presence. Along with the members of this team, I've been involved with workforce and affordable housing in the past 10 years, multiple projects. I also serve on the TRG for Boulder Affordable Housing Fund, and I've done so for about the past eight years.
We're getting some bad feedback. Andy, you may need to mute your phone.
My phone is not on.
Andy, Andy needs to mute his phone.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You to avoid the feedback. If you need to speak again, press star six.
Okay, thank you. This, this, real quick, this should be a, you know, we'll be here for 12 or 15 more minutes listening to the applicants, so everybody can mute themselves except the person who's speaking. I'll pick it back up. Again, along with the, the members of this team, I've been involved with workforce and affordable housing development in Boulder for the past 10 years, through multiple projects, and also serve on the technical review group for Boulder's Affordable Housing Fund. I've done that for about the past eight years. We believe this project will help meet the recognized need for affordable and workforce housing in Boulder, and we believe this site is a great location to meet that need due to the following characteristics. The residential context of the site, our proximity to jobs, there's 5,000 jobs within a mile of this site, and 38,000 jobs within three miles of this site. We believe that we can reduce commuting vehicle miles traveled by placing housing in proximity to these jobs by about a million miles annually. Finally, this site is a great location for additional housing development due to its proximity to the great existing retail amenities that already are there within Gunbarrel. With that, I'll turn it over to Pete Weber, who'll talk about in more detail about the specifics of our plan.
Thanks, Matt. Sloan, can you advance the slides, please? This slide goes into some of the details about the vehicles, miles traveled, and so on. If you go one more, Sloan. So hello, everyone. My name is Pete Weber. I'm one of the principals at Coburn Architecture. We are the designers, planners, and architects for the project, and we're very excited to be here tonight. I want to pick up, start by picking up on what Matt said about location. We believe this is a great location for a bunch of new residents to live. As the people that live in the neighborhood know, this is, this is a great place to live. One of the things that's great about it is the proximity to the Gunbarrel Center itself. This slide kind of depicts what's, what's available to you within a half-mile walk, within a mile walk of where we are. That 10-minute walk would get you to right across the street, the Sleepy Time Cafe. There's a new brewery just a large block away, and the 20-minute walk would get you to, to additional breweries, the Twin Lakes Open Space, and the Gunbarrel Center itself. Next phone. So in addition to being well-located, the site's also very well-connected. The blue lines on this slide depict bike lanes, multi-use paths, both existing and proposed, that kind of crisscross the neighborhood and come immediately adjacent to the site. Importantly, I think the lowboat trail is the kind of squiggly line in the lower part of the drawing there that connects Boulder to Longmont, almost entirely on trail. It's been a great asset, and look forward to being next to it. The next one. In addition to the bike routes is RTD service, the bus service. The Bolt runs up and down the diagonal highway connecting Boulder to Longmont, and in addition, the 205 runs down 63rd and J Road connecting downtown Boulder to the Gunbarrel Center. And the 205T actually comes right up, right past the site on Spine Road. So we believe that this site is actually quite well-connected to the, to the world around us. The next one, Sloan. The land use. As Sloan touched on, we are proposing a project that is contiguous to, to other multifamily housing. So our neighbors who I'm sure we're gonna hear from here tonight to the east, we're proposing a multifamily development that's very similar to where they live. In addition to that, there is the single family to the south, and then our commercial neighbors, Shaw Steel Seasonings, and Medtronics, and other users in the Gunbarrel area. As Matt noted, you know, that, that mix of commercial and industrial, light industrial is great because it allows residents to live near where they work. Next. So I want to walk us through a little bit how we came with, came up with the plan that we had, that you have in front of you. What we did, we basically started with the question of where could buildings go on the site? So the big gray blocks you see in the first diagram here indicate these are the places where buildings could go. So we start with that, then we quickly start to break it down. The first step we made here is to make the streets, bring, bring the buildings to the edge and make the street complete Spine Road and then the additional streets that were adjacent to. At the same time, we hollowed out the center here so that we can keep the buildings at the edge and provide parking and open space more in the central portions of the block. And the next thing we did was introduce open space. We have really two major open spaces that we're introducing in the project, one which splits our upper block in two in the east-west direction, and additional one to the south of the property that buffers from the single-family neighborhood there. Both of those also are associated with, with drainage, so it's a natural fit. And then the last thing we do is break it, break it down even further, get more light and air into the project by making connections throughout, through, both within the project and to our neighbors and the larger community. So the dashlines here, you can see are pedestrian connections through the project, which break, break it up a little bit further. Then after we've kind of gotten to that general diagram, we asked ourselves, now how are we gonna start to arrive at architecture? How are we gonna break these buildings down? And our first look was at our neighbors across Spine Road, the Powderhorn in particular, and tried to look at how those buildings created a rhythm along the street and how they treat the world around them. So we've created an approach here that is somewhat similar in that our buildings, both in footprint and are broken down, and the way they are in section and, and massing, to some extent mimic what's happening across the street. We took our hints from our neighbors. So I touched on open space as part of how we put together our overall diagram for the site, and I want to break that down a little bit further here. So the two larger spaces I mentioned are, you can see in the dark green here, and you can see in the, the rendering, is the, rendering is of the major open space that's in the middle of the, the upper block. Then you see the, the larger green bar at the southern end of the site and another one at the northern end of the site. These are the larger open spaces. But then we have other types as well. The, the light green is spaces that are associated with those pedestrian connections that I mentioned. These are kind of caught between the adjacent buildings to create a more intimate sort of outdoor space. And then the last piece of it is the, we're proposing a, a green connector that will run north and south through the project that will connect a project within itself through those parking lots. And what that does is it, it does a couple of things. It provides a great connection, but also greens up that parking lot so that it's not just parking, it's actually green open space in the center of the project. And here's some thoughts about ideas about what those green spaces could be like. We anticipated a variety of open space from a very active kind of thing that you can see in the upper left. We're considering some community gardens, and then something that might be a little more passive is kind of what you see on the right-hand side there, more walking kind of oriented, maybe not quite as active. We see that, that variety happening through those open spaces I pointed out earlier. Now, how are we gonna handle the parking and how are we gonna handle these internal connections? So the parking, as I mentioned, we really internalized it. We've tried to, as much as possible, keep that parking from impacting the neighbors and from impacting the streets around us. So we have these three centralized parking spaces that make up our three main blocks. We have three main parking types. We want to break that parking down, so we have a number of tuck-under spaces, which would live under buildings that would both be tuck-under and some garages. We also have some carports. Those carports both cover, help cover the cars, but they also create another element within the larger parking area. And then lastly, we have just the, the surface parking spaces. So that variety creates a total parking package. And then I wanted to point out the, the rendering here. This shows part of the intent that we're trying to create with that, with that connector that's internal to the, to the parking area that connects the projects and actually cuts through a couple of the buildings to allow that pedestrian access to move in the north and south direction. This gets into a little bit more detail on the connections. So the green line, you can see there, the heavy green line is that connector, and then the, the picture there is kind of some inspiration for what that maybe could be like. Again, trying to bring that life into the middle of the project. And then the smaller green arrows are the pedestrian connections that both connect the project to itself, but also to our neighbors and the world around us. Then I want to talk a little bit about how we're, how we're accessing the buildings. I think it's important to note that we are proposing that these buildings be accessed both from the fronts, the street side, and from the interior side. So we want to activate those streets with the, with the users of these buildings, and so entries will, will be provided at both the convenience of the parking lot, but also the public side of the street. Then I just want, so all that put together, I just want to walk us through the, the overall plan a little bit, and I just, we're just flipping it here so that we can kind of see it a little bit better. So as you can see, we've, our buildings have been brought to the street. They start, they do a good job of forming Spine Road and then the, the other streets, Sleepy Time and Zinger. You can see the green space, especially the large one in the middle there, and then the other greens at the north and south. You can see how the parking is centralized, and you can see the greenway through the parking. You also see how the parking lots help, or sorry, the, the carports help break up those parking lots. And you can see how the, the pattern of the buildings relates to our neighbors. Then we'll talk a little bit about the architectural characters. Sloan touched on it a little bit with some of the larger renderings. I'm kind of, gonna zoom in a little bit for a little more detail. We're proposing two- and three-story buildings. As Sloan also pointed out, we are stepping down to two stories as we get to Spine Road. The, the buildings will contain materials that we think would be quite robust. The, the two-story portion you're looking at here is intended to be brick. We're looking at wood or wood-like products for the, the insets, which are the balconies, and then a quality cement board kind of product which will form the third major material. Also on this slide, you can see that, that common entry, which has the awning over it. And then I also want to note out, note that each unit will have its own private outdoor space, so those balconies and patios that you see would be associated with each and every unit in the project. And then lastly, we have been working on this since we submitted this package, and this is a, a new rendering that was just completed, I think this morning actually, that gives you a little more detail, a little less sketchy, a little more precise about the architecture that we're, that we're intending. It also shows a little more detail on the, the green space. This is one of the buildings that would flank that central green that we're talking about. So that's, that's what we had to say about it. We're excited to hear your thoughts. We're very thankful to be here at the concept plan level. We're anxious to hear thoughts from the planning board and our neighbors, and look forward to any questions you might have. Thanks, Sloan.
Thank you for the presentation. Bring it back to the planning board for questions of the applicant before we go to public comment. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, Lisa?
I guess, just thank you, first of all, for that presentation, for Coburn's work on that. Secondly, I guess, I, I was just curious if you guys explored anything else to kind of reduce the amount of surface parking in there? I know you said you had some that was tuck-under and some that was garage. It's just kind of a visceral response that I always have when I see that we're losing that much land to surface parking. I know how expensive undergrounding and garages are, but I was just curious what you looked into.
Well, I'll try to answer that. We did, as you can see, we do have a variety there. We did not explore for very long underground parking because of the expense that would add to the project and then ultimately the residential units. We are looking further into this. As I said, we continued to work on it, and one of the things that we are exploring is adding additional tuck-under parking to help reduce that surface parking. We don't have that ready to show you yet. That would be at the, the site plan level, but we are, that is under consideration for sure.
Cool, yeah, that'd be something I would, I would love to see in general in this project and others, while recognizing what that does to budget and, and pricing.
Okay, John?
Yeah. Was wondering, have you considered, given that this is supposed to be a light industrial area, devoting any space perhaps on the first floor to, to those sorts of uses?
I think I would leave that one to Andy or Matt.
Any comment from Andy or Matt about, I think John's referring to live-work industrial spaces. Is that right, John?
Well, I would say live-work or other light industrial spaces, given the, the need for that in Boulder.
Okay.
I think.
I think Andy's gonna try and use his phone here.
Andy, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone.
Sarah, you might need to promote him for not seeing him.
I can't because he didn't pull in as, come in from the link, so he's not using a camera, video with a camera.
I'll answer it to, I, I can go ahead and answer it. You know, we have not explored any industrial uses. Our focus really has been on residential. You know, we think that that's something that's, that's, you know, needed, you know? So our focus has been on, you know, middle-income residential housing as well as affordable housing, and it's not something that we've investigated. I don't know that the uses are terribly compatible with, with residential. So at the moment, our focus has been purely a residential development.
Thank you.
Sarah?
So in the packet, Sloan and, and her, her colleagues may, made a point of the inadequate percentage of open space in the current conceptual design, given what's required. So I'm curious where you, where you might find additional open space? How will you use the space more efficiently, whether it's parking or bill? How are you gonna, how do you think you're gonna get to the at least 40% of open space that you need?
Design magic.
Design magic, awesome. Could you clue, clue us in?
We have been exploring that as well. Since staff came out with their comments, we have been looking at it, and part of what I mentioned earlier, the additional tuck-under parking, that's one tool that we've realized we could use to free up additional open space. We do, we do believe we meet the total amount of required open space. The contiguous piece is one that we need to work on, but that's one technique that we're exploring. It does, it, and it looks promising. And there is a, other movement we can make with the overall site plan that allows us to get more. We're hopeful that we're gonna be in a good place there.
Okay, I'll be interested to see what you come up with, because I think the contiguous nature of the open space was an issue that Sloan brought up repeatedly and is vital to. was an issue that Sloan brought up repeatedly and is vital to this development and to, obviously, to the Gun Barrel community.
Anybody else on planning board with a question for the applicant? Okay, then Sarah Hunt, oh, Lupita, you want to raise your hand that way? All right, you'll have to unmute yourself.
I was trying to find where the raise your hand and I didn't do it quickly enough.
That's all right.
I had a couple of comments or questions. One had to do with some of the comments that I read from the neighbors that gave us some of the feedback. It had to do with the residential nature of the development. Whether you have considered, just like John mentioned, the light industrial, I was more concerned about all the commercial businesses, like restaurants, that could be accommodated potentially near, you know, and you're just on the first floor potentially, just so that provide that 15-minute walk. I don't know, a limit that we have, which I know you already mentioned, 20 minutes. So is there something that people have considered? Have you looked into that at all? Is that even possible? And my other comment had to do with the colony of pretty dogs, which I know was brought up many, many times. I would like to know, just on a percentage basis, how much space is this colony takes from the development space that you're looking at?
I'll try to answer that last one. We have not surveyed the site, pretty dog colony. So I can't really speak to the percentage of our project and how much that colony takes up. Your previous question about additional uses on the site, I think as Matt pointed out, we hadn't really explored it. We were trying to maximize workforce and affordable housing. Not to say any of that is completely out of the question, it just hasn't been on our radar yet.
Yeah, again, our focus was really on the idea that the retail amenities exist within Gun Barrel already. And the jobs exist within Gun Barrel already. And right now, you've got a situation where folks are commuting, you know, from outside of Boulder into Boulder to get to those jobs. So we really were trying to solve for the need of more middle income and affordable housing.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah for a minute, Huntley. And Sarah, how are we doing on public comment? How many public commenters can we estimate that we have?
We were successful at pulling the signup lists out of the system. So we have about 45 people who signed up in advance for the Spine Road hearing. So I proposed that I run down that list, giving those folks a chance to speak first. I imagine there are many other people on the call who would also like to speak to Spine Road, but didn't know that there was an optional signup available. So after we go through the list, what I would propose is that anybody who has not spoken to Spine Road, who wishes to speak to Spine Road, be given instructions on how to raise their hand virtually in the system so that we can call on them, Harmon. But I don't have the ability to tell you for sure how many people will be the total number of lists that way.
Okay. Alternatively, we could, it's 7:45 almost now, and we've been at this for an hour and 45 minutes. We usually take a break after about two hours. We could take a five or 10-minute break as the board give you a chance to get the list of, to invite everybody who wants to speak, who isn't on the list to raise their hand and get us a total. And then we can decide whether we're going to go to two minutes or three minutes for public comment. Does that make sense at all, Sarah?
I'm just a little bit concerned. I mean, in theory, people know if they signed up using the Eventbrite link, but I'm a little bit concerned since we can't display the list that people may not know whether they're on the list or not. So if you want to get a total universe of people who wish to speak, what I think we should ask is anybody who's on the call right now, who wants to speak to Spine Road, whether you signed up in advance or not, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand so that during the break, I can tally up the total number of people so that the chair can make a decision about whether we can do two or three minutes. So the way you're going to raise your hand is if you called in by video, if you pressed on the link to join this meeting, there will be a raise hand button at your horizontal menu along the bottom of your screen. If you click on raise hand, I will be able to see that you raised your hand. I see people are finding it because we have 50 raised hands at the moment. If you're on the telephone, you can't obviously press that button. So what I'm going to ask you to do is press star nine. So if we could maybe during your break, ask people to make sure they're raising their hand. And then when you come back as a board, I can give you a total and then you could probably make a more educated decision.
Great. Okay, so it's 7:44, it's about to be 7:45. Would people need 10 minutes or would five be enough for our break? 10, okay. We'll see you at 7:55. And it's going to be, I can already see with 60 raised hands, we're going to have to go to two minutes per public commenter. Okay, so we'll see you at 7:55 and we'll start public comment. Thanks, Sarah.
We're still on a break, but I want to let the first three people know that they're up first on the list so they can prepare themselves. We've got Alana Irving, Michael Day, and Rob O'Day. We're not going to call on you just yet, but I just wanted you to know that you are showing up first on the raised hands to this evening.
It's fun looking at your background, Harmon. Can see the sunset over the hills there.
Yeah, I do like the view. We could get that building out from there. Be Alda, Bear Peak and South Boulder Peak, both.
Nice.
Okay, so we're just waiting here for Lupita. We're a couple of minutes late. I want to get started right now. And I also think that it's probably a good move at this point, judging by the time and the total number of people who have signed up, to consider just moving the second item on the public agenda tonight to the 28th so that we can cut Gene and Jim and others who are here, applicants for the comprehensive plan piece, which is the next item on our agenda loose. I don't think there's a good likelihood that we're going to be able to even start that until 11:00 or 11:30. That's no time to be starting a comprehensive plan update, map update. So if everybody agrees with that, then I think we can know right now that we're not going to get to that item on the agenda.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to for sure continue this hearing, the May 21st planning board hearing to May 28th, which we should all have reserved on our calendar.
I would recommend that you make a motion to that effect, Harmon.
Okay, so I'm just going to make the motion and I'll call for a second. I'm going to move that planning board vote to to continue the planning board hearing tonight for agenda item 5B at least. And we'll see if we have time to deliberate on 5A. But at least for planning hearing item, public hearing item 5B to the May 28th date, where we will hear the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan midterm update screening process for amendments to the plan for members of the community and staff-initiated amendments to receive further consideration. Is there a second?
I'll second. You have lots of time.
A lot of seconds. Can I just pick one? Pick one. I'll pick John Gerstle as my second. So the motion was from Zuckerman, the second was from Gerstle, and let's take a vote. Roll call vote. Lisa Smith?
Aye.
And David Ansine?
Aye.
Sarah Silver?
Aye.
John Gerstle?
Aye.
Peter Vitale?
Aye.
Lupita Montoya?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, so passes seven nothing. So thanks for coming out, Jean, and for good staff report. We just need to give you a little bit more time, and I don't think starting your matter at 11:30 at night is gonna serve us very well or serve you or the public.
Very, very much appreciated, and thanks to the folks, all the applicants and members of the community who turned out for this. We'll have more information out to folks regarding links and timing and the public hearing for that on the project website and by email coming up in the next few days. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, we had to keep you here till eight, but I figured that was better than keeping you another three hours. Okay, all right, so I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah Huntley. Sarah, can you take care of public comment on Item 5A, please?
I can. So Harlan, we have 59 people who have raised their hand. A couple of people are sharing a phone line, so it actually might be more like 64, 65 speakers because there's two people on one line who each like their two minutes. So I think you indicated before the break that given that number of folks and the hours of limitation we have in front of us, that you were going into two minutes each. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, so the easiest way for me to manage this is to just go down the list in the order of folks who have raised their hand. I'm gonna do my best to also cross folks off from the signup list. So at the end, if there's anybody on the signup list who wasn't able to figure out how to raise their hand function, I will call on them just to make sure they have a chance to speak. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, that's fine. And if there's any way to let people know in blocks of three or five so that they can get themselves unmuted and we don't waste time in between speakers, that would be great.
So I can let people know in blocks of three or five, they can't unmute themselves until I can unmute them. And I can only do it for a person at a time.
Okay.
So that's a limitation of the platform, I'm afraid, but they can at least queue up and make sure that they're ready to go.
Okay, thanks. I just didn't know how that works for you, Sarah.
During the break, I did let Alana Irving, Michael Day, and Rob O'Day know that they were the first three on the list. So I'm going to start with Alana, and then we'll get to Michael and Rob in just a few moments.
Great, okay, go for it.
Alana, you are live.
Thank you so much. Thank you, members of the planning board for allowing me to speak. I don't actually know where to begin. I will start by saying I'm a member of the Orchard Creek neighborhood just to the south of the proposed development. And I can tell you that the fancy pictures that we saw and the beautiful architectural renderings are in fantasy land, frankly. It is no reality check on this at all. They have no understanding of how packed Spine Road is. The traffic congestion on Spine Road is atrocious already. Powderhorn residents already park in the street. There is no street parking to the south on Spine. There's no, to that west side of Spine, there's no extra parking. There is one trail here in Gun Barrel, and it is a small trail, and it runs right into our neighborhood. The parking will be in our neighborhood. I can tell you the overflow parking will be here. They don't have any basis in reality for exactly what they're doing. There is no amenity in Gun Barrel. We have no library, no public parks. We have no public parks. We have no open space. We have no, we have one King Supers. Have you ever been to that parking lot? I tell you that you haven't because there's no parking there. We have no public infrastructure to support this. And I can tell you that this project will be a disaster on many levels, not the least of which is infrastructure shortage out here in Gun Barrel and traffic going from diagonal to J. And 119 is atrocious.
Sarah?
Okay, next up, we have Michael Day, Rob O'Day, Adam Lee is in the queue after that. Michael, you're on the air.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to the board and to the applicants. So the first thing I want to comment on is the reality of the walking distance. So it takes about 30 minutes to walk to King Supers. It's not a very pleasant walk because of the traffic that's been mentioned. So if we were to have development in this area, I would like it to include the possibility of things like a coffee shop or a restaurant. And then there's a couple of general concerns that I would really like the board to think about with this and with other developments. The first is I'm a Boulder native. I was born at Community Hospital several decades ago. I've struggled most of my life to get to a point that I could finally own something in Boulder, and I was finally able to do that about a year ago. I've lived in this neighborhood, in the Powderhorn neighborhood, for six of the last eight years. And I'm very proud to be able to own my property. I'm deeply concerned about the idea of affordable rentals as opposed to programs that are more comprehensive to help people own their property so that they can have a sense of obligation to the community they belong in and have a sense of pride about the property that they own and occupy. The other general concern that I have is around the open space. There is a park that is shared among a number of communities here, the Gun Barrel Commons Park. There's nothing in this plan that brings this new community into participation in that park. And frankly, the amount of open space that's offered is not particularly well allocated. And the view that Harmon mentioned before we started, we are all on Spine about to lose that view. So I would like everyone to think about the impact.
Okay. Next up, we have Rob O'Day, it'll be Adam Lee, and then Estepa. Rob, you're live.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me okay. I just want to first state, I'm a development professional, worked in the industry for the last decade. I've been personally involved in over 100 multifamily projects across the Western US. I happen to live in Gun Barrel, so I've taken an interest in this project. And while it has good optics, I have to be blunt and forthright with this board in calling to light the fact that this is a weak effort at best. Matt Schilt respectfully has already sold Gun Barrel a bill of goods once. He was involved in selling empty promises at the Alexon-Gunbarrel project for news with Trammell Crowe, and that project turned out to be anything but what was promised. Andy has sold Boulder a bill of goods on the Nest projects where crime is rampant, and they were sold on many of the same feel-good optic pieces as the inclusionary piece on this project. They've turned out to be an unmitigated disaster. I encourage everybody to go drive around his projects at Nest and ask yourselves if this is what is appropriate in Gun Barrel. Lastly, Pete, the bike is a nice prop. It looks good in the background and the architecture office. However, this site has a walk score of 12. And while it is a close walk to several breweries, it is not a walking neighborhood. And it is certainly not a neighborhood that has any sort of connectivity for a bike connectivity into the city or commuters that's even remotely accurately presented in this proposal. Lastly, the inclusionary housing piece on this board, it is set up to be segregated from the market rate project, and that is an abject failure waiting to happen, and it's a disgrace. Thank you.
Next up is Adam Lee, then we'll do Estepa and Rebecca Morse. Adam, you're on the air.
Thank you. Yeah, so what I wanted to speak about was that I live directly on Spine Road, so Spine and Wellington on the corner. I brought this up about, I believe it was two years ago, for the speeding issue that is on Spine. It is out of control, not to mention the traffic is out of control. So right now, this project is gonna put about 1,600 new trips a day. Now, based on Boulder's Neighborhood Speed Management Program, which I do have the information from, from 2019, we are number six on the list for speeding issues in Boulder. 2,100 cars per day are speeding on Spine Road alone. I have seen personally multiple times, children, elderly, bikers almost killed crossing the road. That is because there is a private park right there across from Spine. If that is gonna be something, if we're about to put 500 to 1,000 people in that area, there needs to be something done about that. Why is there not promoting an entrance from 119? That's one option right there. Cut off Spine Road in general. That should not be a through, that should not be a pass-through. That's one option as well. There's multiple things that could be done here to not only reduce the traffic, but also the massive amount of noise pollution. Think of the cars, and everyone that lives in Gun Barrel knows this. On Spine Road, not only do you have car traffic, but you have massive amounts of actual truckers coming that are shaking houses. If that isn't changed, this is going to lower that property value for every single house that is within five of that road. This should not be allowed, and if it is allowed, something needs to be done to mitigate that right there. It is going to affect every single person's property value. That's all I have.
Okay, next up is Estepa, then we'll have Rebecca Morse, and then Mark Ricketson.
Can we get Estepa's first name, please?
I'd ask them to identify themselves with their full name when they get started speaking. You're on the air.
Hello, my name is Sheri DePauw, and I am a resident here in Boulder. I'm a veterinarian. And yeah, I thank you for allowing me to speak. And yeah, I would like to just express my dismay on the constant development that is happening in this town, especially that when it involves areas where local wildlife live. I mean, none of the developers seem to make any notes or even mention that they even really knew that there were prairie dogs there. And you know, I'm constantly just so saddened by the lack of consideration to the locations where these animals have their homes. I hate to see, you know, animals slaughtered. I have participated in the city council meetings before where, you know, basically has come up that there really aren't very good relocation options for the prairie dogs. And so a lot of times it does come down to lethal management, which is incredibly disheartening. You know, we've had this sort of never-ending development to the west, you know, affecting the wildlife that live there. Now we're having this never-ending development to the east. You know, there was just the colony that just had to be moved where foothills meets diagonal. And you know, all of those kind of developments. I saw the newspaper article today where it says that, you know, the population of Boulder has actually been declining. So I'm not quite sure why we're still having these constant never-ending developments of residential buildings and apartments. But you know, my most important concern is just the lack of care and consideration for our local wildlife who have a right to live, and you know, they have their own colonies. We've destroyed enough of them. You know, in this day and age, that I feel like we should be doing what we can, what is possible, to be able to protect these animals and their natural habitats. So I really want to discourage, honestly, any killing of these animals. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Rebecca Morse, then we have Mark Ricketson, Julie Dye, and David Dye. Rebecca, you're on the air.
Hi. Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Rebecca Morse. I'm a resident of Boulder in Gun Barrel, and I support affordable housing in our community. I ask that the planning board move ahead on this proposal as long as it contains a sizable chunk of permanently affordable housing. I believe that the potential community gains from local affordable housing are always worth exploring when opportunities arise. I want Gun Barrel to be a place where the same people that work here can live here and not a country club for only a certain class of people. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mark Ricketson, then we'll have Julie Dye, David Dye, and Kurt Nordback. Mark, you're on the air.
Thank you. I have two points that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. The first one, I call the last mile problem. And most would agree that sustainable development is a challenging process to do well, and profit-seeking by its very nature looks to minimize the cost and time to bring projects to fruition and to maximize returns for developers. Developers expect that the status quo will be applied when it comes to transportation. As we heard during the applicant's presentation, they anticipate that cars are the primary way occupants will transport themselves to and from their residences. In essence, this is the last mile problem. If choosing between the current public transportation services and cars, people will overwhelmingly use their vehicles. If sustainable transportation solutions are not part of development planning, one only has to look to Southern California to see Boulder's future. From my perspective, Boulder needs to move to 21st century thinking and develop a viable alternative to personal cars. For example, Boulder has a major technology company, Google, fully engaged in creating the future of transportation. I would like to see Boulder City and County engage with Google's Waymo division to derive a sustainable solution to the last mile problem we face today. The second point is having to do with developed, underutilized properties. Several properties within Boulder are large in acreage but underutilized. We look at, we can look, everybody's familiar with the diagonal plaza. It's probably better suited for high-density development than Spine Road. The other property that we, most people don't consider, is the airport. It's 176 acres. Councilman Mark Wallach proposed repurposing the airport to achieve all of the sustainable housing goals for Boulder completely and return that property back to the tax rolls and create hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs. So I'd like to consider repurposing underutilized developed property for high-density housing. Thank you.
Next up, we have Julie Dye, then we'll have David Dye, Kurt Nordback, and then Diane English. Julie, if you'd like to go first, you are on the air.
Okay. I'm Julie Dye. We live in Orchard Creek. The narrow strip of land between the Celestial Seasonings factory and Spine Road is zoned and intended industrial. The developers focus their proposal on comparing commercial to residential, but they are really asking you to effectively downzone while doing the bare minimum to meet our city's affordable housing needs. There will be a long-term loss of city revenue with this inappropriate rezoning while leading to a significant increase in required costs for the city. The developers' gain is Boulder's loss. We have reached a tipping point in Gun Barrel. The 68 affordable housing apartments will not offset the cost of increased surfaces that the project demands from the 200 market-based apartments, which lie within 1.6 miles of 280 apartments at Coburn's diagonal crossing, 231 at Apex 5510, 251 at Gun Barrel Center, and across the street from 1,016 homes. Gun Barrel has one grocery store, no rec center, no library, few services, inadequate infrastructure. With this development, you are setting the precedent that minimal effort and short-term smaller gains are more important than long-term thoughtful growth that works in partnership with Boulder's comprehensive plan. We are raising our children in this neighborhood. Our closest public park is a seven-mile drive. This is not a walkable part of Boulder. It's at least a 30-minute walk to Gun Barrel Center and any services. Spine and J Road are dangerous roads, and people have died. Unlike the developers said and showed on the map tonight, there is no bike path to Boulder. It has dead-ended in our neighborhood for 20 years with no easement in sight. Public transport is not conducive here, though the proposal estimates an aggressively naive 20% of alternate travel. We must assume that the human behavior on the west side of the street will mirror that on the east side. There is not enough demand for busing because people will drive. This is a bad deal for our city and for our This is a bad deal for our city and for our residents.
Okay, David, you get your two minutes now. David Dye.
All right, thank you. My name is David Dye, and I'll yield my time to my wife to address a few of the points that were made by the developers.
I'm sorry, you can't pool your time this evening. It's against the planning board rules, so you'll need to speak.
All right, so David Ensign had said his back of envelope calculations assumed about 171,000 square feet. According to the conceptual plan review on January 6th, total square footage is well over 250,000 square feet. Our neighborhood property values will go down, and destroying this landscape will be devastating to several Keystone species and animals who thrive here and call this valuable wildlife corridor home, including prairie dogs, owls, red-tailed hawks, and eagles. It's a place where our community recreates, and this land improves the quality of life environmentally and socially for Boulder citizens. Personally, this development would be harmful to our family. Never mind the promised celestial seasonings made, or the loss of value of construction development will have on our home and property. We will lose where we walk. We will lose the owls, birds, animals in view that have filled our family for years. We will lose the safety of our walking and our driving for proposed development who has segregated pools for people in affordable housing versus the market-priced housing. Say no to downgrading this land in the name of smaller temporary funding that defeats Boulder's long-term goals. To strengthen our economy, provide a better quality of life for our people, and capitalize on our core assets and values, that housing balances with preserving the environment through open spaces.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kurt Nordback. Diane English will be next, and Katie Farnin after Kurt. Kurt, you are live on the air.
Hi, Kurt Nordback. I live in Boulder, and I work on Longbow Drive, just east of the site. I don't have to tell you, planning board, how desperately we need housing in Boulder, especially affordable housing. My office has about 15 people in it. Only two of us live in Boulder. The rest all commute in from as far away as Loveland and Westminster and Netherlands. And so there's a tremendous amount of driving that results because of that. And so I support having additional housing in this area. I do have a couple of concerns. I bicycle there every day to work, and the connections for pedestrians and bicycles between this area and the main part of Boulder are not particularly good. I would love to see the applicant find a way to make a connection between this and the proposed diagonal 119 path, multi-use path, that will be coming along hopefully within the next few years. And secondly, there is a shortage of retail in this area, definitely. My understanding is that convenience retail is allowed in industrial zones. And so including some kind of convenience retail for the benefit of the neighborhood and the neighboring businesses, especially maybe at the northeast corner of the site, I think would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Diane English, then we have Katie Farnin and Carmen Baron. Diane, you're live on the air. You may need to unmute yourself.
Hi. Hi. I really object to the proposed building of such a volume of high-density housing beside where I live just now in Orchard Creek. And when we bought our home in December 2019, we believed we were buying into a quiet residential community away from the built-up areas of Boulder. We did our community survey before we bought, and we trusted Celestial as an industrial neighbor and valued that privilege to live beside them, and we valued the privacy that came along with that. And if this goes ahead, other families like us would not want to buy here. So that reduces the desirability of Gun Barrel, thus our property investment value. So from whom do we seek our compensation? Why not reconsider a medium-density plan to create a more effective transition from the single-family homes that is more in-keeping and respectful of the surroundings? Demonstrate a knowledge of empathetic design and planning. Is that so difficult? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Katie Farnin. Then we'll have Carmen Baron and Ora Goldman after that. Katie, you're live on the air.
Thank you. My name is Katie. I live in Heatherwood with my husband and two children. I am a yes to this development because of the affordable housing provision. Very plainly, everyone knows that there is a nationwide housing crisis, and Boulder needs every square foot of affordable housing it can get so that people who work here can live here and vice versa. If the argument is congestion or traffic, I hope everyone opposing this has actually read the concept plan, which states that the alternative land use for this site, office space, would generate over 600 more one-way vehicle trips in an average workday. During peak times, vehicles entering and exiting the development would be about 170-plus if it were developed commercially versus well under 100 vehicles for residential use. So people complaining about congestion are using unfounded arguments, even more so if their arguments against this development focus on pollution. Prior to COVID, I was also seeing plenty of complaints in the neighborhood discussion boards about restaurants closing and lack of amenities here in Boulder. We improve upon those prospects by increasing the number of people who live here and spend here and can work here. But I am primarily supportive of this development because of the affordable dwelling units that will by design allow access to our community to more families and more people of differing needs. As a homeowner and a resident in this community, I am not interested in shutting the door behind me for the various reasons you've already heard from my neighbors, like prairie dogs, regular dogs, views, traffic, or too many people here already. Let's bring more housing to Gun Barrel, specifically housing that isn't single-family only and specifically permanently affordable housing. That is how we strengthen our economy and our community's diversity, and that is the kind of community that my family wants to see here. Please move forward.
Thank you, Katie. Next up will be Carmen Baron, Ora Goldman, and then we have Erin Smalley. Carmen, you're live on the air.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carmen Baron. I'm a resident of Boulder in Gun Barrel. I'm here to express my opposition to Coburn's proposed dense development of the lots on Spine Road. Some questions for your consideration. Besides the major traffic and infrastructure issues already described, if there are damaging results when building in Gun Barrel's high-water tables, who will be held accountable for this damage? And how will you compensate both the new unsuspecting residents and the current existing neighbors to this area? Also, how can Coburn developers invite more people to reside here right beside the railroad tracks to suffer through train horns blaring at all hours of the day or night? This is currently a light industrial-use area, so noise impact is not as drastic for those businesses as it would be for new residential neighbors. Another issue is the Celestial Seasonings commitment to setting aside 15 acres as a preserve where prairie dogs would be protected in perpetuity. They promised that there would be no more development on this land in the future. The city says they have no responsibility in this. But do you not have a responsibility to retain the goodwill of the neighborhood by recognizing and honoring that commitment? This land should remain as the preserve that was promised by Celestial Seasonings. This is the home of a beautiful, thriving prairie dog community that is well-known throughout our Boulder community. Our Gun Barrel neighborhoods have been consistently bombarded with the threat of unrealistic building. After all the previous protests concerning the Twin Lakes proposals, it is downright disrespectful to subject us to yet another crowding threat with Coburn's new proposal for infilling this land. I ask each of you tonight, examine your feelings. How can you place so many more residents here of any income status, affordable housing or otherwise, when the numerous concerns that red-flagged the Twin Lakes proposals all still exist? The planning board should know that our community will not be worn down, and they should dismiss this Spine Road project. Please err on the side of caution. Please consider quality of life over development dollar.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ora Goldman, Erin Smalley, Gabe Daly, and Jessica Stern will be next. Ora, you are unmuted, and you're on the air. You may need to unmute.
Okay, you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. Hello. I'm Ora Goldman. I'm a resident of Boulder, and I'm here to express my opposition to this development. I'm here to speak for the prairie dogs because they cannot speak here for themselves. But they do speak. Every day when walking in the fields, I hear their musical chirping, transmitting like radio waves one to another. Their heads poke from their homes with curiosity. The typical actions when we want to develop in this country is to consider the prairie dogs as pests and just plow whatever is there. We don't like that the ground is peppered with holes where we need to pour our concrete slabs. So we do something simple. We simply poke tubes down the holes and gas the prairie dogs right in their place of supposed safety. Problem solved. The prairie dogs are a Keystone species. That means that their colonies create islands of habitat that benefit approximately 150 other species. They are also a food source for many animals, including plovers, owls, hawks, foxes, and ferrets. But even more poignant, the prairie dogs are individuals. They live in tight-knit family groups called coteries, and their vocabulary is more advanced than any other animal language that's been decoded. The elimination of even one prairie dog impacts the whole, and the relocation of prairie dogs separates families. I know that in our society, we are not used to thinking of other species in this way. As I said, I'm here to speak for those that cannot speak here for themselves because I love them and because we need them.
Thank you. Next up, we have Erin Smalley, then we'll have Gabe Daly, Jessica Stern. They're on one call, but they each get two minutes, and then Debbie Richards. Erin, you are live.
Thank you. You hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My partner and I are conservationists. We're also residents of Powderhorn overlooking Spine Road. We're against this proposed development with every fiber of our being. Sure, it's just one prairie dog field, but when you add up all the open spaces that are being discounted as just one prairie dog field, it actually adds up to a whole lot. Not to mention, by increasing the human population, there will be inevitable increased demands for grocery stores, gas stations, et cetera. This is going to ruin the small-town feel that everyone who currently lives here chose over the busier cities nearby. I understand and validate the need for affordable housing, but this is not the way. You don't create opportunity for people by causing harm to others. It's unfair and inconsiderate to take away our open spaces that we moved here specifically for. It's very short-sighted. We will all live to regret eliminating our natural areas. You call them vacant lots, but they're anything but vacant. Here's a short list of some of the local and migratory wildlife that we see regularly from these fields, other than just prairie dogs. Red-tailed hawks, Swinton's hawk, Rough-legged hawk, Virginia's hawk, Cooper's hawk, bald eagle, golden eagle, turkey vulture, common raven, gray-horned owl, sandhail crane, killdeer, common nighthawk, bush titties, chickadees, red-winged blackbird, western tanager. The list goes on. I don't have time for that. When we remove the Keystone species, the other wildlife are going to disappear as well. You might think of prairie dogs as pests, but one day we'll wake up, they'll be gone. You won't hear birds chirping. Nature will be extinct in Boulder County. You say you want to increase diversity, but you're going to decimate our biodiversity. When the extinctions add up, we're all going to suffer. Do you really want to live in the world where there's only people and their pets? Without Keystone species, we're going to eventually lose our pollinators, our seed dispersers, our pest control, our scavengers, and the beauty of nature in our day-to-day lives. You do want to help each other out, but come on. Take the fight and concentrate your energies towards making the current housing system more affordable. Do not remove our last remnants of nature. Pay attention to what you're doing and how it affects everyone around you.
Thank you very much, Erin. Next up will be Gabe Daly. Gabe, you're on the air.
Hi, can you hear me okay now?
We can.
Great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. So my name is Gabe Daly. I'm also here with my wife, Dr. Jessica Stern, who'll speak next. We've owned our condo in Powderhorn since 2013, just across the street from this proposed development. My parents lived down the street in Deerfield. I grew up at that house just off Spine Road and have enjoyed the open space around Celestial Seasonings for the past 20 years. We urge you to decide against this proposed development for several reasons. First, Spine Road already sees too much traffic congestion and is poorly maintained, as is. Second, preserving the wildlife habitat is important for Boulder's goals on climate action and environmental conservation. Gun Barrel residents, as the last person just said, regularly spot hawks and bald eagles, as well as many other forms of wildlife, because of this habitat preserve, which goes beyond just the value of the prairie dogs themselves. Finally, blocking the mountain view is likely to cause Powderhorn property values to drop and to reduce the quality of life for Powderhorn residents across the street, including ourselves. I would also point out briefly that the applicants mentioned that part of the rationale for the development is to serve the increase in jobs in the Gun Barrel area locally there, and that they said that there's a need for more residential housing, specifically in Gun Barrel, to support jobs that are in Gun Barrel. There has been a ton of increased building of residential housing over the last five to 10 years in Gun Barrel, particularly around the King Supers area. So there's a lot of new housing there. It's hard to see how there's a need for more housing specifically to support Gun Barrel jobs. Need for more affordable housing in Boulder, more broadly, of course, understandable concern. So I'll stop here, yield the rest of my time, and my wife can pick up. We're on the same microphone.
Thank you. Cindy, can you reset the clock, please, for Jessica Stern? And most of you are doing this, but I did have a board member ask me if you could give your full name and your address. That's really helpful for board members. Jessica, you're on the air.
Hi, my name is Jessica Stern, and we're on Gun Barrel Avenue. And just picking up where Gabe left off, if you decide to approve the proposed development despite the community's concerns, we urge you to ensure that the development aligns with Boulder's climate commitment. This includes significantly increasing 205 route bus service off Spine Road to offset increased traffic, requiring buildings to be outfitted with solar panels, electric vehicle charging stations, and bike storage, requiring 100% replacement of displaced plant life via tree planting and native plant gardens with a comparable carbon sequestration capacity, so not turf grass, and requiring amenities that the broader neighborhood can enjoy and access by walking. Beyond climate smart development, we also urge only approving two-story residential buildings, so not three-story as proposed, in order to preserve the mountain view of Powderhorn units on the east side of Spine Road. Additionally, we're hoping that you'll require automobile access to be built directly from the diagonal highway, as someone else mentioned tonight. This would reduce congestion on Spine Road. Finally, the applicants emphasized earlier tonight that there is an affordable housing crisis in Boulder. In that case, why not make it 100% affordable housing, which would be more in concert with climate equity goals and equity more generally? So thanks again, and wishing you good health.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have Debbie Richards, then we're going to have somebody with the first name Kalen. We'll need your full name when you speak, and Beth Quist. Debbie, you are on the air. Debbie, you may need to unmute yourself.
I'm so sorry. Thank you so much. My name is Debbie Richards. My name is Debbie Richards, and I live across the street at Powderhorn. I've lived at Powderhorn for a very, very long time. I look out at Celestial Seasonings, the mountains, and wildlife from my third-floor condo every day. At the time that Celestial moved into our neighborhood, we all knew it was a matter of time until the remainder of the property would be developed. We all thought that the build-out would be light industrial rather than residential. The idea of having 268 apartments directly across the street is incredibly distressing. I'm concerned about a few things. Property values is going to be directly affected. The addresses along Spine Road will be the most significantly impacted, along with Orchard Creek, since it butts right against the complex. The mountain views that we are now enjoying adds tremendous value to our investments in the community. Increase in traffic. There are no real amenities in Gun Barrel like rec centers or libraries, and would cause the residents of this new complex to have to drive back into Boulder. RTD is significantly adjusting the routes in Boulder, and this will impact the traffic. Gun Barrel Commons Park, this is a private park, and the burden of additional people using the park will be the responsibility of the surrounding neighborhoods to pay for it, not the people who live across the street from my condo. I'm also concerned about the permanently affordable portion of the complex, which is separated from the market rate apartments. This feels divisive and sets a horrible precedence for the city of Boulder. Thank you so much for your time and all the work that's been done so far.
Thank you, Debbie. Next up, we're going to have Kalen, then Beth Quist, then Christine Johnson. Kalen, you're on the air. You may need to unmute yourself, Kalen.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. My name's Kalen Anderson. I live on Wellington Road. Boulder keeps building more high-density rentals, and the problems of housing, traffic, pollution, and lack of green space keep getting worse, not better. I absolutely oppose this project and zoning. Here are some of my reasons. Prairie dogs. They're keystone species, which others have talked about, but once their habitat is gone, it's gone forever. Density. I was shocked to learn that the density of this proposed project is actually more dense than 30 Pearl Street project in downtown Boulder. An average of 28 units per acre, when your neighbors are an average of 2 to 19 units per acre, is ridiculous. The need for gun barrel housing that this proposal is proposing is not there. I called to all of the apartment complexes, and they were in early February, and there were over 40 rental units available in various sizes. Every single apartment complex had an available rental. Traffic. Lots of people have talked about this, but there is no connection to Boulder, and Boulder County constructed the study for that bike path without this additional 1,500 cars, so that would need to be redone. Rentals. Affordable rentals do not create sustainable housing for our community. Rents go up, they increase in family size, people's needs change, they outgrow their rental, then they're stuck. They end up moving further away, commuting in. People want affordable ownership townhomes, duplexes, and houses, not rental units. If you want to create sustainable communities, create affordable housing that is ownership, that people can actually live and work in their community. These should be given priority to teachers, emergency personnel, and year-round essential workers. Most people have talked about where people would play, recreate, because there are no city parks, playgrounds, libraries, rec centers, or dedicated bike path from Gun Barrel to Boulder. Broken promises in the other communities that have been built is a problem. What will happen here? Lastly, please listen to the community voices. This is not what's right for the city of Boulder, surrounding community, and rural neighborhoods. This does not solve the problems that you are trying to fix. It only creates more, more traffic, more distrust of local officials, and a loss of wildlife habitat that cannot be restored. I truly hope you consider the outpouring opposition for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Kalen. Next up will be Beth Quist, then Christine Johnson, then Nikki Daly. Beth, you're on the air. Beth, you may need to unmute yourself.
Here we go.
We can hear you.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Beth Quist. I grew up in the foothills of North Boulder. I work with prairieprotectioncolorado.org. Anyone is invited to contact us at prairieprotectioncolorado@gmail.com, and we'll get you in touch with your local networks and organizers and keep you notified of actions. We state that this land is already inhabited by a native biotic community, and we oppose a human development as ecocidal. We understand that celestial made no legal promises, so this is a moral argument. It is horrific that Keystone prairie dogs are down to less than 1% of their historic populations. Childhood memories of field trips with centennial junior high classes took us out to what used to remain of our native prairie grasslands. It's far less now. Prairie dogs support around 200 other species. They aerate the ground, garden out invasive plants, encouraging native grasses for native ungulates. The Dinae Navajo say that prairie dogs cry for rain. This mythology has been confirmed by modern study of hydrology and transpiration cycles. The burrows help to recharge the aquifers with healthier soil, and when this water rises from the underground aquifer tide system, the humidity rises up through the burrows and creates moisture in the air, which actually creates rain. Healthy grassland biotic communities are carbon sinks, ecologically equally vital to healthy forests, and grasslands are even more endangered. Without prairie dogs in our arid climate, desertification is assured. Because prairie dogs are keystone, even relocation is ecocidal. It is not always done correctly and will cause great suffering in the entire community that depends on them. Please refuse this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Next up will be Christine Johnson, then we'll have Nikki Daly and Eugene Wall. Christine, you're on the air. You may need to unmute.
Hi, I'm speaking in support of the infill development on Spine Road. I'm familiar with this area, having rented a condo nearby when my family first returned to Boulder. I believe this site and this plan are good for the future of Boulder for the following reasons. The plan includes 68 permanently affordable units, which will help Boulder meet its goals of increasing the availability of affordable housing within the city. This is a worthy goal for our city because it helps support a greater diversity of people in terms of background and occupation to everyone's benefit. This is an infill location. It is surrounded by built and developed land, including housing, light manufacturing, and roads. As a result, it will not have the kind of impact that conversion of farmland or open space would have. Additionally, city infrastructure already exists at this site. The proposed housing fits in with the character of the area. There are single-family homes, condominiums, and apartments in close proximity. The proposal fits in with the long-term planning for the area. This development is in keeping with the previously approved residential density levels and building proposals. The proposal will not impact parking in the neighborhood. The height of the proposed development is within the same range found elsewhere in Gun Barrel. The prairie dog colony at the site cannot connect with other prairie dog colonies. It is an island. The city, county, and state should protect prairie dogs, but in viable locations. Because this colony is surrounded by development, it is not a good candidate. I urge you to evaluate this site in a level-headed manner, avoiding the hyperbole of some comments you have received. This site is what is best for the entire city of Boulder. I strongly support the city of Boulder's Housing and Human Services Housing Action Plan to increase the stock of affordable and low-income housing. I see this development as part of the long-term plan. Thank you very much for considering my thoughts.
Thank you, Christine. Next up will be Nikki Daly, then Eugene Wall, then Nora Swan Foster. Nikki, you're on the air. You may need to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. One, my backyard backs up to Spine Road. I live in the Deerfield Willow's neighborhood. The traffic on Spine Road, as people have said, is just increased more and more with huge trucks, people speeding too fast. This development will add way too much density that doesn't fit with the residential community. The photos that you were shown showed the light industrial. It didn't show the residential community. With all due respect to the Coburn architects, the development they have designed does not mirror the neighborhood at all. Building the building so close to the road would totally obstruct the view. This is an area where people walk and gain solace from this neighborhood. It's an open wild area, and I don't need to reiterate all the various birds. So the level of noise that will occur on and on with more traffic of a two-lane road that is not maintained already. On this side, we're part of the county. On the other side of Spine Road, it's part of the city. So it leaves an out for both the county and the city. This Spine Road has not been repaved in 15 years or more since I've been here. You do little patchwork on the road. People crash into the meridian. They crash into our back fence, into our yard. There are accidents all the time from people drunk, driving too fast. So there's already been a lot of apartments built in Gun Barrel. The development in the middle of the diagonal is one of the most horrendous, ugly developments I've ever seen. Sadly, I know it was built by Coburn. I give you respect, but it's so unattractive. If that's your plan, then I will lay down on the ground to protect the prairie dogs, the birds, the eagles, the hawks, as well as our own well-being. Thank you for listening. I have much more. I'll save for a later.
Thank you, Nikki. Next up will be Eugene Wall, then we'll have Nora Swan Foster and Rose Goodman. Eugene, you're on the air. You may need to unmute.
Thank you very much for considering my thoughts and for considering the thoughts of all of us here tonight. To save time, I want to piggyback on top of what Rob O'Day said earlier, his comments overall, which I thought were very well put. I also want to piggyback on top of Adam Lee with regard to the traffic. The impact on property values and noise along Spine will be considerable, especially the noise. My wife and I live along Spine at the corner of Wellington and Spine, the south corner of Wellington and Spine, which has already impacted, and there are accidents that was just mentioned. We greatly support the idea of an entrance, even if right turn only, from Highway 119, which would significantly mitigate the impact of traffic on Spine. Looking at the proposal documents, it appears that there would be 1,050 extra vehicle trips per day on Spine Road south of the Deerfield development where we live. If you average that over a 16-hour day, that would be 65 or so extra trips per hour, which of course would be much more at the peak times. Finally, I want to understand, which I don't, since we live in the county on this side of Spine Road, how will the county planning process be involved in this, since it clearly has impacts not only for the city of Boulder but for the residents of Boulder County here in the Gun Barrel? I want to thank you very much, and I'll end my comments there.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Nora, and then we'll have Rose Goodman and Hillary. Nora, you are on the air. Please give your name and address when you begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Nora Swan Foster, and I live on Pembroke Gardens, and our house backs up to Spine as well. And I've lived here for 30 years, and I do want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak under these conditions. I am not in support of this project. I do support low-income housing and affordable housing, but I want to express support first for those who have already spoken so eloquently against this project. Much, many points have been made. I've seen many changes to Spine Road, and I feel that when we first moved in, we were told that Spine Road would never be opened up to traffic, that it would be a residential road. Then we were told there would never be trucks. Eventually, we had trucks and large delivery trucks, and there is no access to 119, and I really would hope that this would be a serious consideration before any further development would be made. And there's a lack of maintenance, as has been mentioned, and also cars driving through our fences. I have three points. I'm really disturbed by the developers calling their green areas open space. I really thought that actually contained manicured green areas are not open space. They use excess water. They do not provide for wildlife in the way that open space does. So I think that this language is confusing and deceptive. And I also supportive of affordable housing, as I said before, but I would like to see affordable ownership in Boulder. We need far more of that as well, and not just excess of apartments, which Gabe Daly already mentioned. We have an excess of those already in Gun Barrel without accessibility amenities. And also, I'm very disappointed by the typical Boulder development that lacks innovation of the 21st century. What's happened to the renewable energy, sustainable energy? Why are the carports, why don't they have solar put on them? It just seems like the regular apartment grab for the developers, and I am really disappointed by this, this whole project that's being put forth into our neighborhood. And I really hope you will listen to these people who have so eloquently and intelligently spoken about this project. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Nora. Next up will be Rose Goldman, then we'll have Hillary. You'll need to give a full name, Hillary, when it's your turn to speak, and Holly Sanders. Rose, you're live on the air. You may need to unmute.
Hi, my name is Rose Goodman. I live in Orchard Creek Circle, and our backyard actually backs up to the area that will be developed. I'd first like to address the fact that the developers and the applicants either have misinformation or have flat-out lied about lots of the information. There is no bike path that goes into Boulder. In fact, if you want to ride your bike into Boulder, you have to go on J Road, which lots of people, or we have lost multiple people from our neighborhood that have been trying to ride their bike on J Road but get hit by cars and then have unfortunately died. And if we increase the amount of cars that have to go down Spine Road and do all of this, then of course those deaths will most likely increase, and that is very unfortunate. The bus routes that go down Spine, first of all, there are only two lines, not three. They only run during the week, and they only run twice a day. The other thing that I would like to say is that I've grown up here my whole life, so I have had lots of different levels of experience in terms of needing and finding a job. I have not found a job as a college student, or as a high school student, or as any other experience level where maybe some low-income people might have that experience level. I've not found one single job in Gun Barrel, and so people would definitely have to need to drive or take a bus or bike, which of course we all know they will drive, and they will not bus, and they will not bike, considering there is no bike path and the bus routes don't come that often. I'd like to say, also, in Sloan's presentation, she only used winter photos, and she did not actually list all the vegetation that does grow there. So they either lied, or there is misinformation, and I think it is unacceptable for people to make a decision right now. It is a denial of due process with the way that the Zoom format is working, and it is unreasonable for them to compare open space to the little green patches that they called open space in their development. And the development, in fact, just doesn't even look sustainable with what they gave us. So I think it is totally unreasonable to put anything up there in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Next up, we have somebody with the name Hillary. We'll need a full name. Holly Sanders and Susan Summers. Hillary, you're on the air. Can you give us a name, please?
Yes, my name is Hillary Baslet.
Thank you. Yes, we can.
I completely oppose the development of this project. I've owned my home at Powderhorn since 2002. 268 units translates to about 536 cars. Spine Road is already a high-traffic area specifically in the morning and after-work rush hours. Currently, the speed is 30 miles per hour on Spine, which means many drivers go 35 to 45 through our high-density neighborhood. There are hundreds of prairie dogs who live on this land. There are hawks, eagles, fox, coyotes, and other animals who coexist with the prairie dogs. I absolutely do not advocate their removal or deaths. I am extremely concerned that White Rock Circle will become a cut-through to drivers seeking to get to 63rd Street. If this development goes through, we must have serious traffic mitigation on White Rock Circle, speed bumps, lower speeds, et cetera. There is a private park, Gun Barrel Commons Park, where dogs can be off-leash on White Rock Circle. It is currently owned and managed by five condo and apartment complexes. We manage the park and pay for it from our dues. I am very concerned that all these potential new neighbors will feel free to use our park without helping to pay for it. There are currently developments being built in the central to north Boulder area. Valmont between Folsom and 28th, two large complexes on Arapahoe between Foothills and 55th, the old Sutherland's land, 30th Street between Walnut and Valmont, the new developments between the Frontage Road and the diagonal, as well as other proposed developments such as the Old Hospital and the west side of 30th between Mableton and Valmont. I ask the city of Boulder to stop trying to shoehorn more housing into every available plot of land in Boulder. I ask for a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Next up, we'll have Holly Sanders, then Susan Summers, and then Craig. We'll need a full name for you, Craig, when it comes to turn for your time to speak. Holly, you're up. You will need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm thinking you can hear me now.
We can.
Okay, very un-technological person here. Okay, my name's Holly Sanders. I live with Rich Land. He's my husband. We are at 5912 Gun Barrels and Powderhorn, so we're straight across from where this plan will be. We're right off of Spine as well, and we're on So we're straight across from where this plan will be. We're right off of Spine as well and we're on the third floor. So I'm, so much has been covered. I am not in favor of this. I am in favor of affordable housing. I am in favor, of course, of like where you can bike and get to places without having, you know, without having to use your car. So, and I'm terrible at this, but I'm trying to be okay. So what I want to say is that Rich has been born in, he was born and raised here. He's lived here his whole life. His family is here. I've been here since 86. We've lived here. We've owned this place since over 20 years. I've worked at the mental health center with at-risk youth. I could bike there. He could bike places. We can bike to our relatives' houses. We chose it of purpose, right? For those intentions. And as you hear with everything, we've just gone along with what the changes have, ongoing changes constantly happening and trying to adapt to that. And it's overwhelming, I'd do better if I could write this, but it's overwhelming kind of to take in what's happening. But what I wanted to, okay, so what I'm saying is I also am an artist. I literally am a landscape artist. I look out of my patio on the third floor and my intention was to bring in photos or I thought with Zoom I could show you guys. But what I did catch was that I heard earlier John commenting on how nice Harmon's scene was. And the deal is, is that our condos on the top floor, we only have a sliding glass door and a window that go to our patio. And in the back, we have one window that will face garage, it faces garages and the condos behind us. So literally, we're going to be in jail. I'm going from having a fantastic view where I paint and draw and have solace every day and helps us get through our life and cancer and all that stuff, and it's going to be gone. And I don't know quite how to deal with that, but I hope they put this someplace else.
Thank you, Holly. Next up will be Susan Summers, then we've got Craig and Suzanne Smith. Susan, you are on the air. You may need to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Susan Summers. I actually live in Long Island, Colorado, but I am a local prairie dog advocate and a prairie dog relocater. And speaking out tonight, not only for the prairie dogs, obviously, but for the residents of this area, the human residents of this area. As we have all heard tonight, this is not vacant land we're talking about. This land is home to hundreds of prairie dogs and the other wildlife that depend upon them for survival. This development would not only cost these prairie dogs and other animals their lives, but it would cause irreparable damage to the quality of life for the human residents of this area. I'm not at all surprised the developer has not surveyed the prairie dogs. They are always considered expendable. That's why they're down to less than 2% of their original range. And also, while they're considered a species of special concern in the state of Colorado, I can tell you, we have surveyed this area and it's six acres of anywhere from 400 to 600 prairie dog burrows. That doesn't even count how many animals are there. Those are just the burrow openings. As I listen to this tonight, the only possible argument for this development is the affordable housing component. And if there's such a demand for affordable housing, then why is this not developed, this developer not coming to you with 75% affordable housing? Why is it a measly 25% affordable housing? And my understanding of affordable housing, the problem cannot be solved by just simply building more homes. It's far more complex than that. So I hope that tonight, this actually is a democracy and that majority rules and that the majority of these people tonight are opposed to this development. I certainly hope that you listen to them. This affects them directly every day and it cannot be undone. So I encourage you to vote no on this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next up, we have Craig, then we have Suzanne Smith and Kit Fuller. Craig will need a full name when I unmute you. You are on the air. You probably have to unmute yourself now.
Yep, great, thank you. So my name is Craig Millis. Thank you, board, for your service and Coburn, thanks for your interest in Gun Barrel. I've been a resident of Orchard Creek for almost 10 years. I lived here, I live here with my family. And I would consider supporting this land being developed, but certainly not in the version that's being proposed. This proposal is too dense. It has no provision for something like a coffee shop or similar retail and no artistic character. Where's the effort to make this into a destination, something that both new residents and existing Gun Barrel residents can enjoy? Andy, Matthew Schultz, and Peter Weller, hope you're still listening. Let's call this proposal what it is. It's a first low-ball offer that maximizes your return. You pack 268 units in space that warrants less than half that number with the cultural and architectural value of a Motel 6. Planning board, Gun Barrel deserves better. It's no secret that Gun Barrel has evolved with little to no thought in planning. And the recently defeated Twin Lakes proposal does not lend confidence. This is an opportunity. Make us feel like you also live next door to Celestial Seasonings and hold Coburn and other developers to do better. Less density, thoughtful traffic management, and please, some consideration for making this a cultural or artistic design, something that we can all enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, up next will be Suzanne Smith, then Kit Fuller, and then Lynn. Lynn will need your full name. Suzanne, you are on the air.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne Smith and I live on Brandywine Court. I want to address a couple issues. One is that I believe that the parking needs have been greatly underestimated. There is no overflow street parking on Spine. And if you live here, you can see that. So the developers would have had to create parking spaces for all the possible cars and I believe that number would be closer to 536 to 600 cars. Even in a one-bedroom apartment, you can have two people with two cars. So I think that has to be rethought out. Spine right now cannot handle the extra traffic. Again, if you live here, you know that already. And you know about the affordable housing issue. I think with COVID-19, more and more more and more office space might be rethought to be housing. And I think we need to think about using that rather than new builds all the time. And lastly, I want to say that Gun Barrel is affordable housing. We have lagged behind Boulder forever. There's a lot of vacancy right now. There's actually 70 vacancies in the condos in the area. And the housing prices and the rents are low here, lower, excuse me, lower than proper Boulder. So it's not dedicated affordable housing, but it's some of the most affordable housing in Boulder. Yeah, and I just, well, thank you for the planning committee for listening to us and getting our feedback.
Thank you, Suzanne. Next up will be Kit Fuller, then we have Lynn, then we have Victoria Harvey. Kit, you're on the air.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Kit Fuller. I live with my wife at 4600 Cloud Court in Orchard Creek, immediately adjacent to the proposed development. And I am speaking in opposition to this proposal. First, of course, I do object to using Zoom instead of a real public hearing for the meeting. There are a lot of people have spoken eloquently and I'd like to add my voice to that argument. I would also like to question, you know, what's the rush to push this agenda? This, this is really not urgent. And besides, really, my main point centers around COVID-19, which is killing more than 1,000 Americans every day and keeping millions out of work and endangering the economy. In case you think we're pulling out of the dangerous period, you must know that yesterday had the highest rate of new cases so far in America. This is not the time for business as usual, especially if we're talking about development that breaks new ground. Much is at stake in that kind of development and too much is unknown right now. We don't know if we are even well or if those near us are well and we don't know if tomorrow we'll be fighting for our life. We don't know how long these very difficult times will go on. We don't know how long our, we don't know how our community will evolve and what business changes will be needed and what changes might be possible. We don't know which businesses will survive nor how some will have to evolve. We don't know if business closures and unemployment will be more serious or linger longer. We have surprises ahead. Some will be good and some will not. I urge the city council to put a moratorium on development, break no new ground, send proposals back to designers with instructions to revise them once we know more about this new normal. We don't know about building materials availability, skilled workers, and I'd echo point Suzanne just made. Will office buildings be vacated as people work from home? We may have new opportunities to reuse and repurpose old buildings that already exist and you break no new ground. We need a moratorium now and I urge the council to reject this proposal and set a moratorium for development for three months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kit. Next up will be Lynn, then we have Victoria Harvey, then we have Randall Clark. Lynn, please identify yourself at the beginning of your presentation. You are on the air.
Kit, that was the perfect segue for me. You know, we gotta snap out of it. This is COVID. I certainly empathize with all these wonderful plans that these architects, my son's an architect, you know, but there's a different paradigm now. And you need to be repurposing the football stadium at CU, three-quarters of the campus of CU, because only the labs are going to be able to be live people there. You gotta repurpose all the structured parking and surface parking in town because there's no point, there's no cars going anywhere. You gotta repurpose the hotels. You gotta repurpose DIA. There's plenty of projects out there, but nothing like this. This is entirely different paradigm of how we're living now. And even before all of this, I'd still say this is another project of just say no. You build more housing, then you need more jobs for the housing. Then you need more service jobs for the housing and then you need to build housing for those service jobs. This is called the military-industrial complex of growth and growth for growth's sake. And the population, overpopulation, already challenged us with this virus because that's why we have it. So we gotta stop. I'm sorry, guys, but you gotta repurpose what.
Thank you, Lynn.
Just let the record show that was Lynn Siegel of Dewey Avenue in Boulder.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Victoria Harvey and then Randall Clark and then Betsy Guam's. Victoria, you're on the air.
Hello, I'm Victoria Harvey. Can you hear me?
We can. You might want to get a little closer to your microphone.
All right. I live at 4729 Spine Road, Unit D, so I'm ground floor, straight across from Celestial. I have 11 windows. They all look right out of the open space. So I'm involved because it's an emotional experience with all of us who are residents. I have to say, first of all, that I appreciate the process. I have a lot of respect for people on the board. It seems as though you all work very hard and you're very conscientious. I appreciate that. And I wanted to speak up in, against this project. And my biggest concern is that the infrastructure and that Spine and J are dangerous. And yet, when I'm listening to everyone speak, I hear so many awesome perspectives and I have a big appreciation for people who live in this neighborhood. Somebody said they thought the developers were in fantasy land and I agree with them. This is not a walking and accessible place so that you can walk to places close by. Everyone drives. And there are also, and Sloan didn't mention this in her presentation on the neighborhood, but I, I think she needs to include that Powderhorn, for instance, has 550 units and you gotta double that for residents. And the other couple of complexes right here are just as big. The other thing I wanted to say is that renting units instead of any other buying them makes it impossible to control those rents. First of all, it's only 25% low, but then the rent can increase. So I don't have a lot of trust in that. I appreciate your time and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Victoria. Next up will be Randall Clark, then Betsy Guam's, and then we have Monica and Alexandra Pagnota. Randall, you are on the air. You may need to unmute.
Did I unmute myself correctly?
You did, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Hello, thank you for welcoming me to speak. My name is Randall Clark and I'm a resident since 2005 of Powderhorn immediately across Spine Road from the proposed development. And I'm a member of a new grassroots group opposed to this development proposal, many of whom have spoken tonight. First, I want to object to the format of this meeting, which is infringing on our right to participate in a public hearing. Zoom is not an acceptable format for a meeting of this importance since you can mute anyone at any time. We can social distance in a large space for a public meeting. We're all, we've been doing this already in other venues. Now I need to focus on my concerns relating to this proposal. I moved to Boulder about 18 years ago from an east coast city where city council and county commissioners made many bad decisions without considering the facts. I moved to Boulder because of the values of this community, transparency, allowing the community to participate, bountiful open space, respect for nature, et cetera. Friends from the east coast would, would ask, "How do you like Boulder?" And I used to respond, "It's wonderful and refreshing to have a city council and county commissioners who consider the facts before making decisions and a council that keeps its promises." I've supported Boulder City Council many times for many issues, municipalization, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, knocked on doors, passed out flyers, whatever was needed. But now I come to this meeting with a very heavy heart, something I never thought I'd have to do for the first time when attending a public meeting here. When I saw on your proposal referring to the building on vacant land, this isn't vacant land, it's occupied by prairie dogs, the prairie and all creatures, great and small. The city of Boulder understands that prairie dogs are keystone species and Celestial Seasonings made a commitment to this species in perpetuity. Our bond is our word, our word is our bond, whatever. It's been very painful to see that my neighbor, Celestial Seasonings and Boulder City Council, that I have loved living near for the last 15 years, is now breaking a longstanding promise to its neighbors. Also, it's very painful to see a neighbor rudely plan to build six feet or so higher than its closest neighbor that they looked across.
Really, you gotta wrap it up. You're out of time.
Okay, very sorry. I just want to say that we're opposed and we will boycott you and we will boycott Celestial and we will do this far and wide if you proceed. And if you don't listen to us, and I hope you do listen to us and bring us into the conversation and hear what many people have said so eloquently and more eloquently than I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Randall. Next up is Betsy Guam's, then we'll have Monica and Alexandra Pagnota, and after that is Donna George. Betsy, you're on the air.
Hi, thank you for having us here. I live, my name is Betsy Guam's. I live on Spine Road in Powderhorn. My husband and I moved here 20 years ago with the knowledge that Celestial Seasonings made a promise to the people of Boulder to keep the prairie dog colony alive. And we have been under immense stress, not only with COVID-19, but with, you know, knowing that our property values will decline immensely. My husband and I are senior citizens and we bought this place to retire so that we could have a lovely view of the mountains. Yes, I know that's selfish. But most importantly, it was the prairie dog colony and the wildlife and the open space. But most importantly, it was the prairie dog colony and the wildlife and the open space that is there. The open space is dwindling immensely in the forty-five or forty-seven years that I've lived here. And I do not want to see this happen to yet another prairie dog colony. I agree a hundred percent with everything that Beth Quist mentioned before, so I don't need to repeat her. But I definitely can tell you that this has caused us immense emotional stress and that we are totally against this, and that if it does come down to boycotting, we will do so. And I have brought this up before. We talked, I talked with Channel Seven News about this a few months ago. And you can also see that, I believe, on YouTube. But I strongly, strongly urge you to vote this down. This is not the place to put this. Boulder is going out of control with buildings that aren't needed. And as far as working here, I mean, I live here, but I have to work in Louisville. Living here doesn't mean that you have a job here. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Next up will be Monica and Alexandra Pagnota, then Donna George, then Lisa White. Monica, if you could let me know if there's just one of you speaking, or if you're each going to speak with the two minutes, so we can adjust the timer accordingly. You are able to speak now.
Yes, hello. Can you hear us?
We can.
Oh, great. Hello. Thank you, everyone. I'm Monica Pagnata, and I'm here with my daughter Alexandra Pagnata. We won't take up all of this time, but I just have one thing to say. I oppose this proposed plan, and partly because of Joni Mitchell's statement, they paved paradise and put up a parking lot. Please think about that. I'm gonna hand this over to my daughter Alexandra Pagnata.
Hi, I'm Alex Pagnata, and I'm fifteen years old and go to Fairview High School. I live in Orchard Creek by the prairie dog habitat, and ever since I remember, I would go down to the fields and watch the prairie dogs pop up and down in their holes. You might be wondering, why should we care so much about these animals? What do they add to our lives? The simple answer is that the prairie dog is a keystone species in Colorado, which means that they are largely depended on by other animals in the ecosystem, such that if removed, drastically change the environment. And don't get me wrong, I love development in Boulder and support it wholeheartedly, but when development interferes with the prevention of important land and the ideals of protecting animals in the state of Colorado, there needs to be a line drawn. I believe that we all have the goal of saving this land for my generation as well as future ones. By building this habitat, it would cause more pollution issues, overpopulation, and disruption of an ecosystem. Once you develop land, you can never go back to the ecosystem that you might have destroyed. I urge you to consider a more suitable location for the development instead of on the prairie dogs. If anyone wants to help, you can email prairiedogprotectioncolorado@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica and Alexandra. Next up will be Donna George, then we have Lisa White and Alisa Soares. Donna, you're on the air.
Hello, my name is Donna George. I live in Gun Barrel. There is no guarantee that these proposed two hundred and sixty-eight apartment units will house people who work in Boulder. I asked this question to a Boulder planning staff member during the two thousand and fifteen Boulder Valley Comp Plan update about some new apartments on Pearl Street. The answer was, they had no way to determine if the residents there work in Boulder, and it was possible that people who work in Denver and yet really want to live in Boulder, live in those apartments. In addition, the affordable housing units built by the housing authorities are through a federal program and therefore open to citizens nationwide. While talking to a resident in one of these developments, I learned that they were from a town more than a half hour east of here. Also, there was someone on the waitlist from Texas. There is no guarantee that the applicant will build affordable units on site. In many cases, they promised this and don't follow through using the cash and loo option instead. And many of these developments can revert to market rate after a specified amount of time, sometimes in as little as fifteen years, making this a profitable deal for the investors and developers and a short-term solution for Boulder. A much better plan for affordable housing in Boulder is to make the housing already built more affordable through various programs such as the mortgage help, also programs such as Habitat for Humanity, where residents have the opportunity to own their own home and build equity in a much better solutions. There is a lot of money to be made in Boulder now with lots of high-tech industry moving in, and the sharks are circling to get a bite of the action. If you keep feeding them chum like this project, those sharks are gonna keep coming around until the feeding frenzy destroys Boulder. The question now is, do you work for the sharks or for the tax-paying citizens of Boulder? This should remain a prairie dog reserve as was promised. There should be no development here. Gun Barrel has asked numerous times and very badly needs a full sub-community plan where the citizens have sufficient input in planning the development of their community.
Thank you, Donna. Next up will be Lisa White, then Alisa Soares, and Eileen Joseph. Lisa, you're on the air.
Great, thank you. Hello, my name is Lisa White, and I live in Boulder. And I am here tonight to speak in support of this proposed housing. As we know, there's a housing crisis across the nation, and Boulder is no exception to that. So I support this, not only for the addition of affordable housing, but also for the increase of diversity of housing options. Diversity of housing options is the number one need according to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, and it's something that we just know our community needs. With Gun Barrel being an employment center, I think this is a great opportunity to have people be able to live near where they work and not commute. I would love to see some enhancements to the project. For example, some people have mentioned incorporating mixed use such as stores for convenience, and I definitely support that to allow residents and neighbors to be able to have amenities close by. And I would also support increases to the transportation plan in order to enhance the transit stops as well as improve the bike access. And then lastly, I wanted to mention that I support this because of the compact development. We know that compact development has less environmental impact than urban and suburban sprawl, which which results in a loss of open space for less housing. So I appreciate that this project incorporates a lot of housing on not a huge amount of space. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, next up will be Alisa Soares. Can you reset the clock, please, Cindy? Then we'll have Eileen Joseph and Stephen Foster. Just waiting for the clock to get reset before I put Lisa on. Okay, Alisa Soares.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Yeah, my name is Alisa Soares. I live in the Redpox Hills neighborhood of Gun Barrel. First, I want to say thank you to the planning board, to the applicants, and for presenting in this format. I'd first like to acknowledge the people who are able to join this public hearing on Zoom format without the hardships of needing to find childcare or get themselves to a city building to stay for an entire evening. I think you have the opportunity to hear from more and different people with this format. I am a resident of Gun Barrel. I work in Gun Barrel, and I would like to voice my support for this development as long as developers can't pay any sort of cash and loo to exempt themselves from affordable units. I would love to see a greater proportion of affordable units. Gun Barrel clearly needs more low and moderate income housing, not only for local workers who are currently commuting long distances into the area, of which I have a large number of coworkers who do this, but also for those who aren't able to afford to own housing, even if it is so-called affordable. I think it's unrealistic to assume that affordable housing and affordable homeownership can be achieved by the same people as affordable rental units. And I think it's closed-minded to believe that renters can't and don't participate in their community as much as owners. I would absolutely encourage you to solicit feedback from those renters in the neighborhood who maybe weren't aware of these proceedings. I know this won't solve the problem. It's an incremental step in diversifying the population of our neighborhood. I would urge people to think of this as a human issue. I find it really incredibly sad that we seem to be overwhelmingly in favor of the idea that people of modest means, those who we expect to serve our community, are not welcome to live among us because we are not able to welcome change and instead believe that we have a right to a space that we happen to get to first. I would encourage our neighbors to think about what they miss out on when we live in such a homogenous community, and for the planning board to continue to thoughtfully approach development. Thank you.
Thank you, Alisa. Next up, we'll have Eileen Joseph, then we'll have Stephen Foster, and then we'll have somebody with the first name Jan. Jan, we will need your full name when you start speaking. Eileen, you're on the air.
Thank you so, so very much to all of you, especially at this late hour, honoring that we are all neighbors here tonight and that we are all doing the best we can on a difficult topic, but certainly during difficult times. With all of that being said, I'm speaking in strong opposition to this proposal. I am the owner of four seven two five, Number E, Spine Road. When I purchased my condo in two thousand and one, I chose to pay more for the prairie dogs and the direct mountain view. Per the architect's rendering, my unit will now look directly at a carport. With a job relocation, I became a landlord, and over the past four years, I've seen my ability to rent my unit challenged by the overdevelopment in Gun Barrel. Bottom line, there's a glut of rental units in Gun Barrel, and I'm challenged in not only finding renters but collecting the rent I need actually to support my ability to cover my costs. Do I believe any of this supersedes the need for affordable housing or more sustainably oriented city plans that reduce our carbon footprint? Absolutely not. It's the reason I chose to move to Boulder to begin with. It's my life's work. The reason that I am opposing this project, echo many that have been said before me, but I'll try to summarize the most important ones to me as follows. I believe we have enough housing units in Gun Barrel to mitigate the work-life-transportation challenges that we are currently facing. I don't believe that's the problem. We have witnessed large-scale development in Gun Barrel with significant economic and environmental impact. None of these massive projects, to my knowledge, has shifted the needle on affordable housing, and none, to my knowledge, has supported a stronger energy or transportation grid that we so desperately need. This development, in my opinion, will add to our carbon footprint, not reduce it. And this project is not necessarily inclusive of the community. In fact, I think it seems to be more in the interest of the developer. Most, sorry, most importantly, the Boulder I know and love has more imagination than that, so I think we can do better in marrying these values of human, environmental, and economic interests. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eileen. Next up will be Stephen Foster, then Jan, then Claudia Hansen Theme. Stephen, you're on the air.
Yes, good evening. My name is Stephen Foster. I live in Pembroke Gardens, near the development. And I have been an environmental consultant for thirty-five years, working on planning and permitting projects. And I wanted to make a few comments. First of all, thank you for hearing my, what I have to say this evening. Secondly, I think that the people who've gone before me have really eloquently provided information about the project, and I actually continue to support them and oppose this project. It's interesting, someone said that this kind of housing would cause less environmental impact. Well, that's achieved at the cost of the prairie dogs. That seems sort of ironic to me. In addition, there are newly developing owl and raptor populations that are served by that population, and they would go away along with everything else. There's been a lot of focus, I believe in affordable housing, but there's been a lot of focus on the renters. I'd like to bring it back to the applicants. The permit that they, what they presented this evening is really poorly conceived and misrepresents both the setting and what they plan to do. I feel like this should not be accepted because it's such a poor representation of the impact on the community. In addition to that, the developer itself is not adding value. They're not adding open space. They're not adding parks to children that might be living in the facility. They're not providing libraries or any other infrastructure to the community, and I feel like this is an absolute detriment. I feel like the noise issues, the other issues, the road access, transportation, all of these are very serious problems. And I really think you should not permit this to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Next up, we'll have Jan, then Claudia Hansen Theme, and then Margaret Hopner. Jan, please identify yourself.
Good evening. That's John, John Rasmussen. Five nine five five Wellington Road in the Willows, adjacent to this proposed development. I want to thank the planning board for their service and understand the city of Boulder and Boulder County Comp Plan and the goals that we all support with that. Compatibility, sustainability, livability are all the most important factors in any new development. I heard something new tonight about, possibly if I got it right, about this designer or developer who came up with the wonderful idea of the diagonal and independence road development surrounded by highways. I don't understand how that ever was approved from all of those points of being livable and sustainable or desirable. This is not what Boulder should be. I moved here in nineteen sixty-eight. I've been a Gun Barrel resident for thirty years. This is way out of scale for the neighborhood. It doesn't provide anything for the neighborhood. And the low-income housing, if I looked at that design correctly, they have an open parking lot right in the backyard of the adjacent single-family homes. Well, that's great. And then all these people look out of their windows to the interior parking lot. The only green spaces I saw in that design were drainage for the parcel. This is way out of scale. It's not well thought out, and it should not be supported. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Sean. Next up is Claudia Hansen Theme, then Margaret Hopner, then Chris Goodman. Claudia, you're on the air.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning board and also invisible neighbors. My name is Claudia Hansen Theme. I live in Boulder, and I want to share my support for constructing permanently affordable and modest market-rate rental housing on these Spine Road parcels. As you know, and is reflected in the staff's report, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan identifies housing affordability and diversity as key needs in our community. And while we have a strong ingrained preference for detached, single-family homes, the reality is that apartments are a housing type that can really move the needle on both of these problems. The Comp Plan also identifies the need for more housing near employment centers and moves towards allowing housing in industrial zones to improve the city's jobs-to-housing imbalance. This project would accomplish both of these things, and it does this better with a larger number of homes. Apartments, again, are a good choice. Most comments tonight have focused on whether housing should be built and not on improving the preliminary proposal. So with regard to the concept plan here, I agree with staff's notes about making open spaces more active and usable in the project and moving car parking away from central shared spaces. Convenience retail would also be appropriate. Some people have mentioned that. I think the city, for its part, would do well to listen to the current residents' concerns about ongoing underinvestment in infrastructure and amenities in the Gun Barrel neighborhoods. But these are not issues that can be addressed in an isolated concept review. So I'd ask you to please support housing here and work with the project team to make this the best possible home for the working people and families that I really hope it will enable to become more deeply integrated in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Next up is Margaret Hopner, then we'll have Chris Goodman and Stephen Zawaski. Margaret, you're on the air. You need to unmute, please.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Very good. My name's Margaret Hepner, and my condo is at forty-three eleven White Rock Circle. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed project. First off, the density, proposed density, is way out of line, not in keeping First off, the density, proposed density is way out of line, not in keeping at all with the current neighborhood. The fact of blocking the views that we have is very hard to understand what possibly could. I think the benefit here is only for a very few people who will stand to like make a lot of money to the detriment of all the rest of us who have lived there and worked there and own places. I think it's unconscionable to think that they mix up the idea of affordable housing with the almighty dollar. If there's anything that the COVID-19 has shown us is that there are values that are more important than the dollar. We need to protect the environment, as been so eloquently explained tonight. And we also need to rely on each other as friends and colleagues and look out for the good of everyone, not just a few people who stand to make a lot of money. I think historically Boulder has been known as a place which supported development, but very responsible development and was interested in protecting the residents and their investments. And this is not the way to solve the need for affordable housing. Of course, there's a need for affordable housing. But as has been pointed out tonight, that is a very complex problem. And merely designating a few places in a poorly designed complex as affordable housing is not going to mitigate that particular difficulty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Next up will be Chris Goodman, then Stephen Zawaski and Lisa Haney. Chris, you're on the air. You need to unmute, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can, but you're very faint. You might need to get closer to your microphone or speak up.
Hear me now?
That's better, thank you.
Okay. I want to state, I want to first state, my name is Chris Goodman and I reside in the Orchard Creek neighborhood. I'm a resident of Orchard Creek now for 20 years. I am opposed to this development. While we were on the, while we've been listening to this, I set up an account. It's a Gmail account. Please, anyone who was on, who stands with me to please email me at preservegunbarrel@gmail.com. First thing I want to address is David Enson roughly did a calculation regarding a PUD light industrial of a square footage of 1,000, I'm sorry, 171,000 square feet. This proposed concept plan is for 251,000 square feet, significantly larger numbers than David's calculation. The developer mentioned three bus lines that run close by here. There's actually only one that runs by this property and it runs only on weekdays. It's the 2:05 T. The others are between 15 and 45 minutes away. The next thing I want to address is my loss of rights by putting in this development here that's high-density housing. I will be losing my rights of quiet enjoyment of my property. My family will suffer a loss of ability to enjoy our home. We will suffer a loss of ability to enjoy our backyard. And our property values will suffer. We will no longer have the ability to leave our windows open at night because we'll be bombarded with the traffic that these hundreds of units will be bringing in. Occupants of this three-story development will peer into our windows and our yard, robbing us of our rights of quiet enjoyment. The next thing I want to address is that I do believe that Mr. Zuckerman should recuse himself being friends with the architect. These are, there are 70 rentals available in Gun Barrel today. Businesses are making permanent changes as we speak to employ more at-home positions so employees can work from home permanently, saving money, increasing productivity, and with a positive impact on reducing pollution in our environment. In 1999, Celestial Seasonings promised us via public verbal agreement that they were committed to providing permanent protection for the remaining prairie dogs. Verbal agreements in the state of Colorado are as legally binding as written agreements. Please do not support this development.
Thank you, Chris. Next up is Stephen Zawaski, then we have Lisa Haney and Michael Joseph. Stephen, you're up.
Hello, I'm Stephen Zawaski. I live on Spine. I have a view directly of the site. I want to say at the beginning, I oppose this platform, my profession. I'm a professional software developer. I'm a security expert. I've developed ground-up specs from nothing. And from that, I can say this is, this is completely inappropriate for a public hearing. There are so many things that are wrong and illegal about this. To go on about that, I'm also extremely disappointed with the communication between the city and developers and Hain and Celestial Seasonings. We have been trying to reach out to them since January and we've, we're not getting peeps out of them. There's miscommunication everywhere. I think this would have gone a lot smoother if we had been informed on how this process should go. And that said, and this has caused a lot of emotional distress, like I'm having trouble talking now. I'm actually a good public speaker. One of my neighbors had a panic attack today over this meeting, calling me. He can't even attend because he's in such distress right now. You just heard our previous speaker, sorry, I forget your name, I got your email. She's literally in tears over this. Now, I'd basically be redundant in all of the things people have said here. This is, we're all for affordable housing. This is not the way to do it. There are over 70 apartments in just three complexes available in Gun Barrel for rent right now. That does not include the private rentals. I imagine there's at least over 100 available rentals right now. In the density of this project, I think I calculated it to be, it's 32 dwellings per acre. And the max we have here is 17. And, you know, Orchard Creek is down to two or three. This is, this is insane density. On top of the noise we're going to experience, there's, there's county laws that have a certain decibel level and we're going to be having this out our front window every day for however long this development goes. I work, I work out of here. And one more thing I'd like to mention is, is I qualified for Boulder's Affordable Housing Program when I bought and I was able to buy on my own here because we are the affordable housing. Thank you, I wish I had more time.
Thank you, Stephen. Next up is Lisa Haney, then we'll have Michael Joseph and Dorothy Donahue. Lisa, you're on. You do need to unmute, please.
Okay, here we go. I think, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You've got a little bit of echo in the background, but we can hear you.
Well, I hope that's okay. I just wanted to say, I live on Spine Road as well. And in the interest of fairness, the Hain Celestial Group should not be encouraged by the city of Boulder to go back serve open space and the species there. I did a Google search for prairie dogs and celestial seasonings and I found a 1999 CNN article that said, what was titled, "Tea Company Agrees to Stop Poisoning Prairie Dogs." And apparently, Celestial had reached an agreement with the Rocky Mountain Animal Defense to, I quote, "ensure that the colony is protected during all activities utilizing the facility and more importantly, that the field is not used for parking." It seems reasonable to suppose this implies not only parking, but developments which would be harmful to the colony. The CNN article also said, "The animal defense group lifted their boycott of the company's tea in light of the new company policy." So the Rocky Mountain Animal Defense Group relied on their promise when choosing to terminate the boycott. And I would like to add that people like myself who purchased homes nearby relied on that promise. So when I moved here in 2003, the Celestial Seasonings had blue prairie dog-shaped signs out in their, what they called their prairie preserve. And they sold these little cute stuffed animal prairie dogs in their gift shop. So they'd obviously accepted the arrangement, but then they were bought by Hain and they have a headquarters in New York. And now apparently, there's no interest in honoring this agreement they'd reached with locals to terminate the boycott. So as a local and a neighbor on this very specific point, among others, I object. And I hope you agree. I would like to think, you know, that we would be able to accommodate all the people that want to live here, but we just can't build ourselves out of the issues. And I feel like this sets a really bad precedence in terms of, you know, building on our remaining natural spaces. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up is Michael Joseph, then we'll have Dorothy Donahue and Brett Oaks. Michael, you're on the air.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. First of all, just like to thank everybody for all of their time and effort on this. I know it's not easy, especially given the current circumstances. My name is Michael Joseph. I live on South Orchard Creek Circle with my wife and two children. I have two major concerns about this project moving forward. The first is traffic. If this project moves forward as proposed, Spine Road and additionally, the signal at J and Diagonal Highway don't have the capacity for the 1,000-plus extra trips per day that, that the development will bring. Additionally, our frequent walks through the neighborhood with our two young children will be much less safe. My three-year-old crosses Spine Road on his bike almost daily and it's already scary because of the traffic. Several people have already mentioned direct access to the Diagonal Highway from the project, which would be a much more workable solution. My second concern is commitment to community. This is a family neighborhood and rental apartment homes just do not drive the same commitment to community that homes owned by their primary residents do. If this were to move forward, I would ask that we carefully consider real solutions to these two issues that are important to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next up is Dorothy Donahue, then we'll have Brett Oaks, and then David Reckberger. Dorothy, you are on the line.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I'm Dorothy Donahue and I'm a resident of Orchard Creek for the past 17 years and Powderhorn, lived there for five years before that. I'm opposed to this development. I was going to talk tonight about the word promise, but I think Lisa, who was two before me, talked about it. But I will reiterate this. In 1999 and 2000, Celestial Seasoning merged with Hain, became the Hain Celestial Group. And an incident happened at that time that there were prairie dog colonies were poisoned. Many generations of these animals were poisoned by the newly formed Hain Celestial Group. This was met by outrage by the Boulder community. People boycotted Hain and they stopped buying their products. The hard-working Rocky Mountain Animal Defense, ARMAD, made a commitment, worked with them and made a, they made a commitment, Hain did, a promise. And they promised to never kill the prairie dogs in any wildlife on their property. They promised to never relocate them. They promised never to develop this property. And they promised to include it in their hourly tour. And they promised to make it into a sanctuary, the Celestial Prairie Park. I'm encouraging everyone to contact theprairieprotectioncolorado@gmail.com. These people who've been mentioned before are going to generously offer to work with us, our new group, our new grassroots group, having media boycotting and any other ways we can bring everyone's attention to what they are doing at Celestial. Please contact them and thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Next up, we have Brett Oaks and then David Reckberger and Sarah Dawn Haines. Brett, you are live.
Hello, everybody. Thanks, board. Appreciate your time in sitting through this. My name is Brett Oaks. I live at, in Powderhorn Condos on Gun Barrel Avenue. So I'll just express my disapproval of this project. The thing I'm really surprised about is the developer, the architect, and everybody involved in it hasn't looked at all the issues that are getting brought up tonight. I mean, these guys have been in business, they've been developing in Boulder, they've been architects in Boulder. And why don't they have answers to all these questions? I mean, they know people are going to bring up prairie dogs, they're going to bring up traffic and noise and all this. It's just, it really, it really makes me wonder like, you know, oh, we're going to, I don't know. It just kind of feels like you're pulling a wool over our eyes. It just, and, you know, like this, the traffic study is not even close to, you know, what is under the traffic studies, traffic studies format for the city of Boulder. You know, if you're in a concept plan, you know you're going to affect the neighborhood. Like, get these answers and have some respect for the people that you're trying to encourage for you to build here. It just really blows my mind. I'm not going to get on everything else. You know, the prairie dogs, the traffic, the community park, the last mile problem, the community buildings, the climate, the lack of, you know, like green building, you know, zero escaping, impervious pavement, solar panels. I mean, you're in Boulder. I mean, you guys are developed and did this before. You know people are going to bring this up. How about getting ready for it and have answers for us? So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Brett. Next up will be David Reckberger, then Sarah Dawn Haines, then Yan Fang Gao. David, you are live on the air. You do need to unmute yourself.
Okay. Hello, board. Thank you very much. My name is David Reckberger and I live at 8756 Skyland Drive. I'm the chairman of the Twin Lakes Action Group. And just today, I read an article in Biz West that reported that Boulder has seen its third consecutive year of declining population. People are moving out. And I believe this is due to the type of high-density, poorly constructed, ill-conceived developments that fundamentally change the landscape of Boulder. In Gun Barrel, there have been over 550 new dwelling units built in the last five years. And remember, a dwelling unit might be a one-bedroom studio, a three-bedroom apartment, or an eight-bedroom mansion. There's on average 2.3 people per dwelling unit. So that's an added 1,256, excuse me, 1,265 new residents in five years. The city and the county preach sustainability and resilience, but they have allowed Gun Barrel area to be overbuilt in excess of the area's carrying capacity, which is defined as the maximum population that an area will support before the environmental and infrastructure components begin to deteriorate. This speaks directly to the sustainability, resilience, public safety, and quality of life in Gun Barrel. In 2015, the BBCP stated that Gun Barrel's carrying capacity was 12,300 people and 5,300 dwelling units. We had 5,850 dwelling units in 2020. We are past carrying capacity. Please do not add another 256 units. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Sarah Dawn, and then we'll have Yan Fang Gao and Steve Pagnota. Sarah Dawn, you're on the air.
Hi, good evening. This is Sarah Dawn Haines. I live down in South Boulder at 1210 Me High Street. And I wanted to clarify the comment earlier made that the NEST communities had disproportionate violence. When you look at the Boulder City map showing the property statistics, you find that there's, it's on par with the rest of Boulder. So also noting that I am also an environmentalist. And the only thing I want to say about prairie dogs is they don't pay taxes. And the reason that's important is because this community comes out more and more to defend prairie dogs. And they do our black immigrant and people of color over and over again. And so if there's going to be any white tears tonight, it should be about the disproportionate impact of our advocacy. We have the opportunity to put libraries into this. Coburn, you've done some awesome work. I appreciate a lot of the things that you've done. I think you can add retail into this. And we need traffic calming everywhere. I live between two schools and because we have open enrollment in students driving from Fairview to Gun Barrel, as they testified earlier, we have major traffic violations on Me High as we do on Spine Road. So this is an important part of any development. We also need to recognize that there's a lot of room for opportunity and to get involved in your community. The only time I hear people speak up about animal habitat is during housing reviews, but they're not doing restoration work and they're not doing trail work and they're not volunteering as much as they could. So lots of ways to get involved and make Boulder better instead of coming against affordable housing opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah Dawn. Next up is Yan Fang Gao. You are on the air.
Okay. First, I'll
Okay. First, thank you for giving the opportunity for me to speak here. I am a resident of Orchard Creek, adjacent to the new proposal. I strongly oppose this project. This appeared to be unacceptable to not only me, but most of the residents here. So firstly, the diagonal crossing triangle area, that is another affordable housing project, is just barely finished, which is, I think, is about one mile only source of this Spine Road project. So I'm just wondering why this area is so heavily targeted. It's not barely just finished. One more, and there's one more coming, and there's already hundreds of apartment affordable housing developed just a little bit lower of this area. So the impact to the nearby residents, I think, is too much and too intense in such a short time. So this is a bad plan and unfair to the nearby people, especially for those people who live in between. Secondly, this project will worsen the traffic and brings safety concerns into the neighborhood. The road condition is already bad. There's low load network. It's pretty much only one way in, one way out, and it's just four single-lane Spine Road. So certainly, there will be a huge number impact as many people mentioned. So lastly, I think the meeting name was not working, and I think a lot of people cannot access this meeting. So I hope more people's voice can be heard, and you hold off to make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Steve Pagnota, and after Steve, we have somebody with the first name Eli. We will need a full name from you, and then Barry McCoquiner. Steve, you are on the air.
Thank you. I want to thank the board and all the people participating. This dynamic participation actually re-inspires my hope and, you know, informed democracy. I oppose this project. I oppose the massive development and building that's been going on in Boulder for at least the last ten years. There are so many parts of Boulder, and actually, you know, places that are archetypical, classic places of Boulder that have become unrecognizable. The building in Gun Barrel has been massive. It's a perfect example of just massive, unbridled building. I support affordable housing, but let's use the existing structures that are already here. Let's repurpose them in a creative and sustainable way in a situation in which those people living there will hopefully be able to own those properties and be far more integrated into all, you know, parts of Boulder using pre-existing structures. And I just want to ask the board to please consider, there was a promise made to the people of this and other communities, really the whole city, by Celestial Seasoning. I know that Haines is probably not legally obligated to honor that, but the board, I believe, is obligated to represent the people. And a promise was made to these people, to these communities, and the board represents us. Let's hold them to that promise, legal or not. It's a matter of ethics. And it's a matter of legacy, you know, to protect Boulder. Let's not turn it into San Boulderino. Let's try to keep it Boulder. It's slipping away from us. And I want to thank the board for all of the hard work that you do.
Thank you, Steve. Next up will be Eli. Eli, we will need a full name from you and an address, and then Barry McCoquiner and Devin Rourke. Eli, you are live. Did you need to unmute, please?
Yeah, just unmuted. My name is Eli Kaelin. I live at 4785 White Rock Circle, Unit E. And I don't disagree with development, but I am against the development of Gun Barrel without building infrastructure, because, like people have said, there's no library. The trails aren't connected. The bus routes aren't efficient enough. And they're putting in a lot of units, and that's going to really crowd up Spine, which is small, as is children are playing pretty regularly. So without infrastructure and stepping back and looking at Gun Barrel and figuring out how to create a long-term plan on how to develop it, I strongly suggest to the board that they take a step back. Don't develop this plot of land and look at how we can make Gun Barrel a place that is creative, unique, has good density, but can also thrive and basically be part of Boulder. And there is disconnect, and I'm really at a point of repeating myself. All I'm saying is that take a step back and look at Gun Barrel ten to fifteen years in the future. And if this is a good project, which I disagree with, then, you know, I disagree with the project currently. Where Gun Barrel is, we just need to look at the long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. Barry McCoquiner, then we have Devin Rourke and Rona Unsell. Barry, you're on the air. We can't hear you. It looks like you've unmuted yourself. Barry, you need to unmute, please? Okay.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. The Prairie Dog Preservation is a well-known verbal agreement. Oh, sorry, apologies. I live on 1365 Bear Mountain Drive. Want to get into this. The Prairie Dog Preservation is a well-known verbal agreement with the community at large, and this council represents the community. Verbal agreements have a legal standing, and this council should do what's right in making sure that the agreement with the community is honored, and it should transcend any transfer of property from celestial. Council should deny this application as a mechanism to honor this agreement. These applicants openly admit that they are not meeting the city requirements on this development with regards to contiguous open space, walking distance, or parking needs. They also disingenuously characterize this as affordable housing, while it is truly a profit play with a majority of middle-income housing. They are not showing preparedness in saying they've not explored multi-use, retail, light industrial, or even surveyed the environmental aspects or impacts of the prairie dog colony or other wildlife on site. The open space is surrounded by their buildings, effectively walling it off and making it a private courtyard that does not benefit the community at large. This is also disingenuous. This development will undeniably add sprawl, thusly helping destroy the character of Boulder, and that is why we live here in Boulder. These developers have already demonstrated their inability to complete projects that are compatible or beneficial to the community, e.g., NEST. These applicants look at the neighbors as justification for further sprawl. It's appalling that they have not completed an environmental impact statement and show such a lack of preparedness. These applicants are tone deaf. In this meeting, there have only been six public comments in support of this project, while hearing more than 50 in opposition. I urge council not to be similarly tone deaf.
Thank you, Barry. Okay, so we have three more people with their hands raised. I would just like to say that we have five people who signed up in advance who have not spoken this evening. I'm going to read your name, and if you're still on the call and you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Or if you can't communicate through a hand raise, communicate through Q and A for me, please. We have Allison Moffett, Deborah Irving, Sheila Cooper, Angie Mashaw, and Lindsay Seals. Going to go on to the next three speakers, but if you're on the line and you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, Devin, you are up next, and you are live on the air.
Great. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for your time. My name's Devin Rourke. I live on Wellington with my wife. Let's see. I want to piggyback on Mark Ricketson's comments regarding the last-mile problem. I think there's a lot more thinking that should be done regarding kind of innovative solutions to transportation. Also, piggyback on Adam Lee's comment about traffic on Spine. That sort of relates to the same issue. It's already on Boulder's shortlist for neighborhood streets requiring attention. I think it's sixth, and not slated for any funding, especially given shortfalls in budget with the COVID situation. So, you know, the ball's in our court as neighbors to try to protect our streets and slow people down and make our streets safer. So anyway, I think there's a lot that could be done, a lot more that should be done to kind of address transportation in a way that's more responsible and makes our neighborhood safer and more desirable. And I think, lastly, I think there's some pretty reckless mischaracterization of Gun Barrel. The retail and the transportation options are changing and are not represented. They're not accurately represented by the current plan. I think there's a lot more creativity that could be introduced into this plan, and it's sort of uninspired right now. Carports are kind of 1990s. I don't know. I would hope for something that looks forward instead of back, tries to innovate instead of blend in. I'm all for blending in and making it a desirable neighborhood, but think forward, be progressive. And yeah, with that, I'll call it. Thanks.
Thank you, Devin. Next up is Rona Unsell, then we have Eric Budd, and then Angie Mashaw. Rona, you are on the line.
Okay. Hi. My name is Rona Unsell. I've been a resident of the Willows for 20 years, and it's immediately adjacent to this proposed development. First, the artist renderings are a total fantasy. I mean, they're meant to be deceptive with this project being promoted under the guise of affordable housing. Gun Barrel's experienced excessive development in the last five years, exceeding the carrying capacity of our area, and overdue, you know, we're having undue stress on our amenities. Excess development is threatening the very character of Gun Barrel, and the reason so many of us moved here in the first place. It's destroying our natural species. To address the traffic issue, because everyone has, I mean, I oppose this development and just echo all the different reasons that other people have stated, but J Road is a single-lane street. Spine Road is a single-lane street. That's the main access and egress to this development. They're already at maximum capacity. There are other intersections that are going to be impacted. J Road and Foothills, Spine Road and 63rd, Lookout Road and 63rd, and we haven't even experienced the traffic fiasco that's going to result from cramming Foothills crossings into a highway interchange. I mean, we have no idea the traffic that that's going to cause. There are dozens of apartment complexes currently under construction in Boulder. Why don't we put a moratorium on building for now and let those complexes get completed? We're in the middle of a COVID crisis. This is not the time to be ramping up construction, because there will be plenty of buildings to be repurposed after this is over. I do oppose this project. It's inappropriate for Gun Barrel, and it's deceptive. It's going to disrupt our neighborhood and change the entire character of all the housing around it, plus destroying the prairie dog colony and disrupting the natural species. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Eric Budd, and we have Angie Mashaw and Sheila Cooper. Eric, you're on the air. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Cindy, for resetting the clock. Eric, you can begin.
Thank you. I've been looking at this project a bit. I think the biggest thing that I see with this is it's a way to continue connecting Gun Barrel to the larger center of Boulder. I think that's one of the challenges that Gun Barrel has, is it's isolated. It has spotty services. And I think this project can be one that is part of a vision of continuing to connect Gun Barrel. I like that this project is on an existing transit corridor. That's something to work with. That's really positive. There's additional projects that are trying to continue to give better bike access in Gun Barrel. That's both with the existing Lobo Trail as well as the proposed bus rapid transit options that are going into the diagonal highway, as well as the bikeway that's proposed to connect Longmont and Boulder with some connections to Gun Barrel. And so if this project goes forward and you want to give some feedback, I think that the transportation is really interesting and think about, I would love you all to think about that holistically and how this could be an additional connector and really add to, you know, what a vision of Gun Barrel might be. You know, I think that there's a lot to be discovered there. I'd like to see a larger process, but those are the kind of things that I would love to see the planning board to tackle. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next up is going to be Angie Mashaw, and then Sheila Cooper, and then someone with the first name Susan. We will need your full name, Susan, when it's your turn to speak. Angie, you are on the air. Did you need to unmute, please?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, my name is Angie Mashaw. I live at 4626 Burgundy Lane. I'm joining my neighbors in opposition to this proposed rezoning of the land in question on Spine. I want to go on record that I filed a formal complaint with you all and the city attorney that the Zoom format is inappropriate. The proposed development, per the Open Space Department review, says, and I quote, "This application has not demonstrated how the proposed open space will be organized or programmed for a common continuous area," unquote. So this proposal, number one, does not meet the required amount of open space. The open space calculation would equal about 3.92 acres. That is absolutely not provided in a continuous form. This, in addition to the required private space, is a total about four and a half acres of 9.8 acres needs to be community and private open space. That requirement is not met. Gun Barrel Commons Park is a private park, just steps away east of the property. The park is funded and maintained by the five HOA Association's 1,016 members. This is a private park costing over $100,000 a year to maintain. This park doesn't exist for the applicant's residence to use, so the applicant can skirt their responsibilities to provide recreational amenities and open space for its residents. The applicant must provide these amenities on-site, just like the neighbors that we are. Our complexes have provided their residents with amenities. And by the way, segregated housing and swimming pools is unbelievably unacceptable and so offensive that that would be happening in 2020 in Boulder, Colorado. I've lived here for 40 years, and I'm appalled at the proposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Next up will be Sheila Cooper, then we'll have Susan, then we'll have Lisa Spalding. Sorry, Sheila. I'm having a problem with the platform here. Bear with me. Okay, you are on the air. You will need to unmute, though.
Okay, I'm Sheila Cooper. I live in Orchard Creek in the cul-de-sac next to the project that's to be built. I disagree wholeheartedly with this development. It's just urban sprawl to me. We're already over, Spine Road is already overwhelmed by the traffic and the noise, and the children catching the bus in the morning. by the traffic and the noise and the children catching the bus in the morning or coming home from school are almost run over. Someone else spoke about the children crossing the road. It's already in a terrible shape. And I hope that the city will reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Next up, we have Susan. Susan, we will need a full name from you and then Lisa Spalding. You're on the air, Susan.
Hi, I'm Susan Einberger. I'm a native of Boulder, born and raised. I'm a current resident of Orchard Creek. And the city of Boulder is a wonderful place to live, as many of us know. And there's a couple aspects of this project and Gun Barrel in general that I'd like to focus on that kind of aren't in line with some of the values of the city of Boulder and what makes it such a great place to live. So the first one is alternative transportation. As a couple other folks have said, there is no bike path or connectivity between Gun Barrel and Boulder. There is a vacant section of the Lobo Trail that forces us onto J Road, which I believe has the highest fatality rate for bikes. So that's pretty scary. Secondly, the bus route, that 205T only runs twice a day. The developers mentioned the bolt. That is not accessible from the land that they're looking to develop. And the second point is recreation, outdoor recreation. There is currently no city park in the Gun Barrel area that is funded and maintained by the city of Boulder. There's wonderful parks on the west side of the diagonal, but nothing in this area where the city of Boulder collects tax revenue. So as other folks have said, the Gun Barrel Commons Park gets flooded by many people who live in this area because we have no other option. So before further development continues, I'd like the city to continue or to consider some of these aspects that make the greater area of Boulder so great. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, up next will be Lisa Spalding. I do want to note for the board, we have a community member who's already spoken, who's raised their hand again, unless I get indication from the board chair. We typically don't let people talk twice, so I'm not going to call on that person. I'd also like to just point out that I have four people on the phone and I'm just a little bit concerned from an equity perspective that they may wish to speak but not know how to raise their hand. So if you're on the phone, just wanted to remind you, I said this earlier, but you might not have been on the call yet. If you press star nine, it will indicate to me that your hand is raised and you would wish to speak. So we're at the end of the list after Lisa. So if you want to speak, please press star nine so we know we can call on you. Okay, Lisa, you are on the air.
Thank you, Sarah. This is actually a question about the city code of conduct. And Chair Zuckerman disclosed that he's working on a project with Peter Weber and his firm, Coburn Development, who are the applicants on this development, proposed development. And I believe this constitutes a financial relationship. It doesn't sound like the chair conferred with the city attorney's office before disclosing his relationship or deciding not to recuse. And I was wondering, I know it is obviously an appearance of impropriety, but I was wondering if the city attorney's office could comment on the relationship to this city code of conduct. Thank you.
You know, we don't usually comment directly back to members of the public. This is your time to speak. But I think that there's an issue when there's an outstanding question that people are wondering about that makes it hard for people to really pay full attention to the hearing. So I do want to address this and I'll let Hella jump in if she wants to touch on it first, but I'm happy to do it myself.
Why don't you go ahead, Harmon, and explain the relationship that you have with Coburn and/or Pete Weber?
So the relationship is that each of us are agents of the same entity. So I work for a company that has a development project as their counsel. Coburn, with Pete as the principal, also works for that company as their architect. I have no financial relationship whatsoever with Coburn that would cause me to not be able to be a reasonable decision maker in, you know, any matter that is in front of the planning board, including ones like this where we're actually just offering advice and not making any decision. And if you're curious about where the recusal obligations come in in our code, it's in chapter two of our code or chapter seven of title two, 279 Disclosure and Recusal Procedure. You have to recuse if you have an interest prohibited pursuant to section 2.7, 2-7-2. And that involves where you have personal financial gain or you have access to confidential information. And I don't have either of those in this case. I'm making no gain from this project or my relationship with Coburn or the fact that I work sometimes with Pete Weber. There's no information that I've obtained about this project that no one else could get. If I had, I would have made those disclosures as ex parte disclosures.
And just to follow up, so there's no contractual relationship between you and Coburn or Peter Weber?
None at all.
And you can be fair and impartial in reviewing this project?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we are at the end of our list for public comment or for the hearing comment.
Okay, so this is the last chance for members of the public to make a comment on this matter. I don't see any hands popping up going once, going twice. Okay, then let's bring it back to the board. It's 10:25. We have a rule that we don't start new matters after 10 o'clock without a vote, but we're still in this matter. We had talked before an agenda about potentially breaking up this this hearing between the public comment period and the presentation and then having our deliberations next week when we have more time. It's hard to start deliberations at 10:25. So I'd like to take the temperature of the board. Personally, I'm happy to provide the applicant with feedback tonight and be done with this matter and just start with the comp plan update matter next Thursday. But I would like to hear what other board members have to say about that. So Peter?
If we can, as a board, agree to adhere to the criteria that we are to utilize to provide comment to the applicant and not devolve into very saucy issues that we may really enjoy going into because they're meaningful, all of us as community members, then I'm open to going forward. But I think we all have to exercise rigor here and and let me sure the public knows that our obligation here is to adhere to the criteria. That doesn't mean we don't care about the issues that were brought up tonight. But if we were to go into those prairie dog holes, we wouldn't get out until midnight and it wouldn't be fair to anyone. So I would put that forward. I agree, Harmon, that I'm willing to give comment on the project based on the criteria, but I would want to make sure that the board is comfortable doing that because this is a very controversial concept, but not all those concepts are related to the criteria that we're supposed to acknowledge as planning board members.
Okay, well, I would suggest that, you know, we all are in front of computers and the criteria for review of, concept review are in 9.2 and you can all pull up the code, but that's what we should do every time. We should remain bound by the criteria that we're supposed to be reviewing projects by. So I think I can do that. I think we all can do that. Anybody else have any comments? David?
Yes, I think that I'm inclined to want to push on tonight, partially because a lot of the people who have taken the time to come on to this, it might be a hardship for them to come back next week. I mean, we have some continuity going with everyone who's been sitting through this. I think that we can probably keep ourselves as efficient as possible, but still get the important points across that we need to.
Okay, does anybody have anything burning to add to that or is there somebody who doesn't want to continue? John?
Yeah, I certainly respect the desire to focus on criteria, but I also regard this as our chance to provide input on all aspects of concern here. And so I am not willing to explicitly commit to limiting this discussion to strictly the criteria that are here.
Is that even possible for us to do, John?
Well.
Are we not to only consider criteria?
I think this is our chance to say whatever we think about the project.
But we're not a policymaking body, so we're.
This is not, this is, they're asking for feedback from us on the presentation that they're. For that reason, I think this is our chance to provide that feedback.
All right, well, let's move forward and let's start providing that feedback. So I'm going to pull up the, I'm going to pull up the staff report where I would assume we've got some key concepts, key issues that we should start with.
Could you go to page, what, page X of 212? So we're on the same, we would have had this on the screen.
Let me open up the, if you're on 212, let me open up just this matter. I had the whole document open. Okay, so the first key issue and the key issue analysis, and we'll use staff's report as our guide, is, is the proposed concept plan compatible with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the comp plan? Not everybody has to speak, so I'm just going to open up my participants window and those who want to speak, raise your hand and I'll call in your order. Okay, first hand up is Sarah's. Go ahead.
All right, so I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble with my computer, so I'm going to be bouncing around a bit. First and foremost, I think it's absolutely essential that the applicant resolve both the internal and the external open space issues before taking one more step forward. The fact that there was an agreement between the company and the community, I think it's, I think the city is abdicating its responsibility to just pretend that it's not there, it's not at least partially a responsibility of the city to try to figure out how to, what to do about that agreement. I have no idea whether, in fact, in the city of Boulder, in the state of Colorado, a verbal agreement is binding, but I think it's, this is not something that the city gets to just brush off because it complicates things. In addition, the the open, the, sorry, the 9-6-4, I'm sorry, 9-2-14H2A Site Design Open Space and 9-2-14H2B Site Design Open Space specifies that the project provides for the preservation of or mitigation of adverse impacts to natural features, including without limitations, trees, plants, ground and surface water, wetlands, riparian areas, et cetera, et cetera, species on the federal endangered species list or prairie dogs, which is a species of local concern and habitat. I do not think that the prairie dog issue is a small issue. I actually think it is a fundamental issue and nothing can move forward until the necessary research, surveys, et cetera, have been done to figure out what to, how to manage, how to respond to, how to deal with the prairie dogs, which you can make the argument that the prairie dogs, this is just one lot, one site and we shouldn't worry about it and whatever. But the fact is, every single time we do a development comes to the city where there's a prairie dog issue, we pretend as if it's not an ecosystem issue and it is in fact an ecosystem issue. So from my perspective, we almost can't move forward until this issue is resolved. I have a bunch of other concerns, but I will stop with there and you can come back to me after everyone else has spoken.
Sounds good, David.
Oh, okay.
David, actually, hold on. That might be a Freudian mute that you muted yourself before you started talking because I think.
There we go. Sorry about that.
I thought John came in before me, but we don't see things in the same order. Okay.
Go ahead.
So I agree with Steph.
David, hold on. John, go ahead. I wanted John to go.
Oh, this is getting complicated here. Okay. Well, I'll just say that I think Sarah made excellent points and I won't dwell on those. But I do have some other concerns and I think, first of all, I think staff did a nice job of going through where things seem in accordance with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan and where there may be some issues of concern. And I think for me, the first issue of concern that popped out that staff did identify here, but I'd like to underline it a bit. And I mentioned this before in questions with the applicant was the issue of diminishing light industrial area in town. And part of the reason I raised that is because I've been active in the East Boulder planning efforts where there's also a big focus on industrial area. And we see that that is diminishing quickly and that it is very valuable for the city to have. And so that's why I'm concerned about the focus, the proposal to change change the classification of this land from light industrial and basically change it to complete residential. And so my comment is, I think that that is inappropriate and that if this is to move ahead, and I have nothing against having joint uses residential and industrial, but I'm very concerned about devoting this strictly to residential use. And I'll have more, but that's the point I wanted to make just now.
Okay, David? Sorry about that. You're up, David.
Okay, and I apologize. I was kind of confused before. So, yeah, I agree with Steph's analysis on the BVC categories that this proposal meets for the most part. I would put in a word for it being a bit more compelling with the point that some of the neighbors made about affordable units being clustered. That might want to take a look at that for the, you know, as you go forward towards a more final design. I do think that that does raise questions when all the affordable units are kind of like in one place. I certainly don't think that they're necessarily segregated to the point where the swimming pool is just for those, but I do think that they are all in one part of the design and that is probably not so great. I also agree with a lot of the comments around their more mixed use being more compelling. That is interesting because there is some language in residential and industrial in our land use code that talks about if it is a residential development, that it'd be 100% residential as a preference. So there is some language in there that I find a little bit problematic. But I think that in the comp plan, there is a lot of language around trying to create walkable neighborhoods. there is a lot of language around trying to create walkable neighborhoods. So a convenience store, something like that would be good. The dominant parking is always a danger with projects like these. So I'm not concerned about the parking reduction so much. But when the applicant, I actually, when you mentioned design magic, I wrote something sort of similar down in my notes about that. I have seen architects, because I'm not an architect, or developers, I've seen some design magic that have done creative things to try to address this parking problem, parking issue of it being dominant within that interior space. So it'd be great to see some improvements around that. There is a lot, there was a lot of discussion by the public on traffic and I was really, I found a lot of those comments quite useful. I think that staff also mentioned the possibility of trying to put a transit stop along Spine. I think that would be good for the for this and for also existing neighborhoods. Bicycle, I had a lot of notes because I've used that lobo path quite a bit. And I realized that this is, you know, like Peter said, we are trying to stick with the criteria, however. And so this is a little bit outside and there are a couple of things I will talk about that are outside because we can think about them triggered by this proposal. And one of them is bicycle continuity. And I'm really trying to get a good master plan for lobo connectivity of that path, since it does come so close to here. And of course, continuous bicycle corridor improvements along Spine in general would be useful because people do need to get down to the business center. And even a little bit further on that thread, and this is for Boulder, this isn't necessary for the applicants. But we do hear a lot of reasons why the Gun Barrel subcommunity is ripe for an area plan. And I really would love to see us have the resources in Boulder to do that. Because there are special concerns out there. I mean, and so the same zone, same zoning and land use out in Gun Barrel might have some different nuances. So so having a little, a few additional things that we could look at for proposals that Gun Barrel subcommunity came back, came up with on their own would be quite useful. So as we continue to work on the work plan for future years, I would love to see us start to see a Gun Barrel area or subcommunity plan on the horizon. I did do those back of the envelope calculations that a couple of people mentioned because I was kind of curious, there's a point for far on non-residential in IG. So I was just kind of wondering what that meant in square feet. So that's why I did that back of the envelope. It does look like this is more square footage than would be allowed in with industrial. I don't think that's a problem to to say that. I was just kind of curious to know if that was the case. And but it is allowed by code. But I did also kind of look at the intensity standards for the RM1 zone right across the street. So as I looked at that, I realized there might be some a little bit of more attention, especially with all of those open space continuity issues that also have to be resolved as you move towards site review. Just think about whether you've really set the right intensity mark here. And if you have it in your financial models to back off ever so slightly to try to be a little bit more compatible with RM1 or, you know, just to think about, you know, open space challenges, that I'm sure that that could make the the final proposal more palatable. And I won't say anything more about prairie dogs, other than to acknowledge that that will need to be looked at because of the history and the importance of prairie dog habitat to people in Boulder.
Thank you. Okay, great, next hand up is Lisa's.
Thank you. So a lot of my feedback is similar to what we've been hearing from other members of the board. So I'll try to move quickly. Just kind of what I said earlier around the surface parking, which I think directly feeds into the lack of open space or the way that the open space works. Anything you can do to improve that would be great. And I think that that will then feed into the TDM plan as well, particularly around parking and parking minimums and maximums and just what can be done there while facing the reality that we heard from many of the commenters, that connectivity up there is not great. You know, RTD was in a world of hurt before this current situation. It's it's going to be very, very interesting. So I would just encourage looking at what you can do with bike paths and some of that. And then what else did I want to touch on? Yeah, I'm not sure if it makes sense for the space, but I personally would have felt more positive toward it if it were more of a mixed use development. You know, if it was kind of creating that walkable neighborhood right there in the actual development, not necessarily something really intensive, but maybe some studio space, a coffee shop, a convenience store. That would be compelling to me. I also shared the concern around the clustering of the affordable units. I'd prefer to see those integrated throughout the site. I don't, I don't like when it's kind of off in one corner. I don't, I don't think that's how we live or how community should be designed. And then finally, just to share my concerns as well around specifically the prairie dogs as a keystone species, the history of that relationship with celestial. And these are all things that I think were called out well by staff on, I think it's under agenda item 5A, page 11 of 212. They called out provision of appropriate open space, the design of the parking areas and the natural environment, specifically mentioning the prairie dogs. So I would encourage spending a little more time on those.
Okay, Lupita, you're up next. You'll need to unmute.
Thank you. So I don't know, number of items I want to cover, most of my colleagues have covered most of them. So I just wanted to add to some of them. My biggest concern is that to make sure that, you know, that we appreciate the fact that we are going, we're trying to increase affordable housing. And so as a planning board, we often look at the opportunities to increase that shortage of affordable housing. So I hope that our, the people who are joining us today, you can see how the difficult job that we have, because we're trying to do the right thing for the city. And sometimes it doesn't come very easy, it's not, it's not a black and white situation. So we have to look deeper. So I also want to reiterate that whole issue about making this a walkable neighborhood, which is easier so far within the larger, you know, city of Boulder. Gun Barrel has already infrastructure that is lacking. It appears that there, there's more need. So I think that in this particular development, the very least, they need to take that piece very seriously. And so we already talked about the mixed use, which is, I think it's becoming clear that something needs to be done in that area. I wanted to just kind of ask my colleagues or, you know, just make a statement regarding, you know, my concern regarding the agreement that was made, you know, decades ago by, you know, Celestial Sisneys and the public, or at least, you know, a verbal agreement. You know, being part of the board, I see my my role as representing the entire city of Boulder. And I think of Gun Barrel right now as part of it. So the deliberations I'm making, to me, I'm looking at the entirety, not this particular community. So bear with me if I'm trying to figure out the, you know, the the right space to to get it all done the best we can. At least, that's what my perspective, so this is just one piece. And I'm trying to, you know, figure out what to do with that information. Let me see. I I believe that we need to clarify, I will ask the developers to really spend the necessary time to clarify the situation regarding parking or more importantly, the traffic speeding safety. We have heard from a lot of our neighbors in that area who have talked about, you know, safety issues regarding to speeding and also the increase or decrease of trips in this area because of this new development. So we have somebody spoke about there should be a decrease because this is residential. So people will be working, presumably, we don't know this for sure, because we don't see the future yet. Nobody does see the future. But in the best of scenarios, we will have at least a portion of people living in this development, if it goes through, working in the area. So there will be a decrease in trips based on that. But if not, we still have people coming into this area to work. So some of that needs to be clarified so that we get a better idea, is this an improvement or not? We do have some good ideas already regarding the better access to 119. I think that's a clear thing that we can take forward and say, how can that be integrated if this goes forward? There was one issue that came out regarding private parks, which some people talked about how much they appreciate having that open space looking from their apartments. And several people specifically mentioned being on a third floor of the condominiums complex that is right now, you know, the edge of housing. If this new development becomes, then these people get to see that open space. So the question is, is it fair to have new people get in that view? Or does it have to stay with the same people who already have that view? That's what I'm thinking in my mind. Because if somebody's okay being on a third floor for their condominium, why is it not fair for somebody else to be on a third floor in a new condominium? So to me, that both third floors, they're just, and they're both condominiums or they're both second and third floor. This is kind of what I will allow people to think about all the things I've even said, because some of the things contradict each other. I would like to just, you know, plead to the to the developers to take some of those comments today and take them to heart so that, you know, when you go forward with the comments you get today, that if we see this again, it will be a much more developed and well thought out, incorporating as much information as possible. Because I think there's some things that are workable. And yeah, I think that's, that's basically what I have for now.
Okay, so I see John and Sarah's hands. I don't know if if you want to talk again. Can you just let me know if you do?
Yes.
Okay, then I want to give Peter a chance to talk first, since he hasn't talked yet.
Thank you very much. I think on balance, it does meet BVCP. I think that the jobs, housing balance, the local solutions, affordable, you know, 1.10, 7.01, 7.02, 7.14, we see that those are weighted, I think, logically above some of the other concerns, which is the loss of of not just open space, but habitat, and that is real. And it's a, I think that it's a balancing act constantly on BVCP, on how we're going to, what we're going to wait. And I think that the addition of housing and housing options, and if I took the word prairie dog and I substituted them for prairie people in every single comment, I would say, of course, we have to protect the people who need a place to live. So that is right now in this, perhaps I'm overly sensitive right now to humanity, given what's going on, that it's difficult for me to substitute the needs of people that have housing near where they live. And I understand, and I think there were several great points made about the post-COVID reality. I lost that kit fuller. I also really liked what Brett Oak said about the developer being more prepared for the obvious. You know, I love pushing Andy on things where he says community gardens. I say, well, exactly what do you mean by that, community gardens? It's, I don't want to be patronized that there'll be community gardens and we're going to gloss over. And we're not going to gloss over the prairie dog issue because it's real and it's meaningful to the community. So that component of the of BVCP and native ecosystems is meaningful. But it is difficult for me to place that below the needs of people and families. I agree with comments such as, and David Ensign's Freudian slip, that when what many folks have said about having a true mixed income community and not a segregated community. I agree with a lot of the comments that there hasn't been enough, maybe because the arrow was taken up by other topics, but I want to see more on environmental. I think this, every new development in Boulder, I know that the energy code in Boulder is the most stringent in the country, some say, but I want to see more there. And I know that it's difficult to achieve parking and that you get this type of design. And I applaud what the developers tried to do so far with the green space that's stitched through the parking. And there's no reason, I mean, the permeable paper solutions, I want to see that further outlined in site review. And finally, the, I don't know where this fits in BVCP, but again, David mentioned this. And Eli Kalin mentioned this as well. We, to say that this shouldn't happen here because Gun Barrel doesn't have the infrastructure or the retail or the amenities. Amenities come when there are rooftops, because rooftops means that there is revenue, which means that retailers can survive. So to say that this shouldn't happen because there aren't amenities means that it's a nonstarter, it's a red herring as it is an argument. So Gun Barrel needs resources, needs retail, needs amenities, and that requires more more, more rooftops and consumers. And I echo what Lupita said, that my third floor is sacrosanct above your third floor. We saw that in, well, I don't know if I can mention other things that we've seen before planning board. But everybody wants their view and everybody wants their quiet. And that's the balancing act. That's where it's a thankless job up here, because we really are trying to provide something for the balance of the community. And the neighbors are never going to want anything next to them. But we try. So I think it fits the goals. I'm excited to see them push this through. This team has done a lot of developments. They know full well what they're dealing with and I want to see a lot more from them at site review.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call on myself and just talk a little bit about the review guidelines and how I see this project proposal as having met or failed to meet them. I'm just going to echo what others said about comp plan compliance and and just say that I think staff did a good job in pulling out the areas of the comp plan that this meets and ought to work harder to meet. So I want to go right into the code and just look at the eight characteristics that that we're looking at under concept plan reviews and planning board. The first is the characteristics of sites and surrounding areas. And and I think, given this, this project's location on the road, you know, it's close enough to the diagonal. And it's, it's in an area that's got some cool industrial buildings around it. And it's got great views, because there's this natural setback that the road creates, since there can't be anything built on a very wide right of way. It just gives an opportunity to do some really kind of architecture that really befits that kind of a site. And we, you know, we have so many gateways. I'm not going to say this is the gateway to Boulder, but I think something that it's a, it's, you know, either handsome, which I think the site is, and, you know, if you don't want to be a gateway, that's fine, make it handsome. And if you do want to to make a statement, this is a good place to make a statement. There are great sightlines on this. And and the buildings can can, you know, really show off the mountains and vice versa. So talking about number two, the community policy considerations. You know, I think I'm just gonna go over that, that there, I'm gonna move past that. There really aren't any subcommunity plans for that we have to consider here. Site review criteria, we can talk about form and mass. I think I'm just going to focus a little bit on on parking and and circulation. And I think that. and, and circulation. And I think that I'll just echo what Lisa said about finding something, a better way to handle the parking than, than a lot of surface parking in courtyards. Opportunities and constraints in relation to the transportation system. I think that connection to the, the lobo path is really important. And I, you know, I heard people talking about a direct connection to, to the diagonal. I think, you know, that might be a pretty difficult thing to do, just getting an encroachment permit from CDOT to get on that road and create a new, new entrance or exit from that road. But I think we'll just let the traffic study determine whether that's really a requirement or whether there's too much traffic on the local circulators. The environmental opportunities and constraints certainly begs the question about what, what's going to happen with the prairie dogs. Seven is appropriate ranges of land uses. And I would really focus on the need for a mixed land use pattern. I think when you're, when you're putting in 268 units, you've got a built in clientele for certain businesses. And, you know, I get, I get it that the walk score is 12 at this point, but the walk score is going to get a little better after the project goes in, if the project's ever built. And I think that giving folks in the neighborhood amenities rather than just more houses to look at is a good move. And finally, the appropriateness of or necessity for housing. I agree that there's a significant need for housing, especially as Gun Barrel is an employment center. And it would be good to have people be able to work and live in the same place. Also, with the amount of in commuters coming in from Longmont, this could be a place where some of those folks could find a way to get back to Boulder, get closer to where they work. So what I heard, actually, that's just my comments and I'll do a little sum up later. So Sarah, you wanted to talk again?
Okay, so thank you very much, Harmon. I want to, two things. I want to agree with David and the point he brought up about the developers considering a less, lower level of intensity that might be more appropriate to what's across the street. And I mean, I understand that you guys are trying to max out the land that you're building on, but it's not required that you max out. And it is quite a bit more dense than, or in higher intensity than the surrounding neighborhoods. And because you've tried to max out the land, you can't actually work your design magic to get the open space that you are required to get, as far as I can tell. And I really don't think for folks who might live in this development, assuming you can resolve the prairie dog and ecosystem issues, particularly think of their parking lot as open space, even if there's a nice green walkway down the middle. I think that that is, that's bad design, in my humble opinion. So I want to support what David said about asking you to consider lowering the density. And then I, I want to point to something that many of the speakers pointed to, which is a lack of infrastructure in Gun Barrel. And I don't think that that has to do, Peter, with how many rooftops there are. I have, think that has to do with Gun Barrel sort of being treated as the redheaded stepchild in Boulder. And you can add a lot of rooftops, but if you don't have a rec center, and if you don't have a complete multi-use path, and if you don't have adequate schools, and you don't have, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, then each new additional development is by definition problematic. Now, this may not be the responsibility of this particular project or these particular developers or applicants, but I, we can't just ignore this, this problem. And I think that this development, should it go forward, there has to be, I think, I don't remember who it was who spoke to this, but what is the, what is the, I'm not sure what the term was, but what's the value add that they're bringing? What are they bringing beyond their development to the community? There's no playground. There, like, there's nothing that they are offering to add. And I think that that would be a valuable thing to think about as you're going through this process and bringing it to site review. And then I also just want to reiterate the point that many, many, many people made about the absence of adequate transit. We have as a Boulder Valley Comp Plan goal, reducing our, our lot reliance on single, a single occupancy vehicles. We want to try to use public transit. We have climate goals. And yet here we have a development which is going to be mostly car dependent. And I, that I think is, is a real problem and a real concern. So thank you for letting me speak again.
Sure. And David, second time across?
Oh, yes. And I, a few things that I had, also had on my list that didn't come up. So just leveraging what Sarah was just talking about, some ways to, that site reviews can be attractive with regards to alternative transportation, RTD, eco passes for residents, good electric vehicle charging station coverage, PV wiring, and even PV on the roof. And this is a pretty nice flat roof configuration for solar. So those are always really useful, as well as a lot of the traffic things that were brought up. And then there was one other thing that I had noted here. Donna George brought up a concern about permanent affordability of, of units. And I always understand how that works with purchased properties and, and the covenants on those. Maybe it would be useful to, if somebody could give us just a few sentences, and maybe Kurt's still even with us, on how that works with rental units. Because I sometimes forget that. And we have new folks on the planning board. And just to, with a, with a rental unit that's permanently affordable, is it a covenant that follows the owner of the property around? And how, and, and is it just as, just as solid as permanently affordable owner occupied?
Go ahead, Kurt. I see unmuted yourself.
Yep. Thanks for that question, David. So for, this project would have to meet the inclusionary housing requirements. And if they decided to meet that by putting their units on site, there would be a covenant in place on the land that would keep those units affordable in perpetuity. The requirements of the developer would be that those units would always be affordable. I think where some people get confused is in other communities where they don't do that, where tax credit financing comes to an end, and sometimes those units are not affordable any longer. That is not, that's not the case in Boulder.
Thank you.
All right, John Gerstle.
Yeah, thanks. So there were just a few other aspects that I thought would be interesting to mention, both to you, my colleagues, as well as the applicant here. And one of those has to do with, with the impact of this project on the neighborhood, not in terms of potentially them losing their view, but there are, there were several folks who mentioned concern about the impact of this on their private park, which, which is funded by, by the residents, existing residents in that area in the Gun Barrel Commons, I think it's called. And I think that was quite a legitimate concern, that it would be almost unavoidable to have folks from this development coming over and taking advantage of the park without contributing to it, either in terms of the cost of maintenance, or in terms of having some similar facility in the land that, that is being developed here for that, that would benefit the existing folks in the neighborhood in, in a similar way. And so I think that is something that one should consider carefully here. What, what is, how is this project adding to the neighborhood beyond just adding people? So that's, that's one aspect. I think several of my colleagues have already mentioned several of these concerns. But I think that the community benefit of open space is something that isn't to be limited only to the residents of that facility, but that should benefit the neighborhood in general. And it doesn't appear to me that that has been a major factor in the design that, that we've seen tonight.
Anybody else? Okay, any final questions for the applicant, or should I sum up? Okay, and, and the applicant will have an opportunity to give us a response or some feedback after they hear the sum, summation. So, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get everything that everybody said, but, but I'm just gonna try to hit some of the high points. So our advice is, in summary, to look into the intensity of use and to make sure that this is the right intensity for the area. We might want to think about being more neighborhood compatible and, and meeting open space considerations through a less dense or less intense project. Need to resolve the issue of the commitment regarding the prairie dogs and then resolve the issue of how to deal with the prairie dogs. We heard from a lot of people in the community, need a coffee shop, need connections between this area and Boulder, need to make the open spaces more active, need more amenities within walking distance. You know, the, all these things are pointing towards making a project that, to ask John's question, how is it adding to the neighborhood? To make the project a delightful addition to the neighborhood. You know, I, I bring this word up maybe once a year. And, and people look at me funny. But, but I think that one of the reasons why we do planning is to create areas of delight. And, and that's why we travel to, you know, San Gimignano on our dream vacation to Italy, because it's, it's a darn delightful place, right? And, and why should we live in this spectacular boulder and not have delight? So, you know, would the neighborhood be delighted if there was a library incorporated into this? Maybe. Would they be delighted if there was a place to get coffee? Maybe. But figuring out how to, how to meet some of those needs, those infrastructure and delight needs that aren't being met in Gun Barrel as part of the project. A lot of talk about bike connectivity to the lobo path. As part of that delight conversation, I guess, and also mixed use studio space, coffee shop, convenience store, those things. I think I've probably hit that enough. Integrate the affordable units throughout, came up a few times. And I think I'll leave it at that. We typically take a response from the applicant, if, if the applicant wants to give us one. Hold on, I, I see John with his hand.
Just, just one point. I, I mentioned at the beginning that this is light industrial, which is valuable for Boulder, and that we don't want to lose too much of it. So they ought to consider incorporating some element of that in, in this project as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think I touched on that a little with live workspaces and studios, but thanks for that. Applicant?
Hello, it's Andy Allison. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry about all the technical stuff earlier. I really wanted to show you my COVID beard. So I'm glad the video is working.
All right.
As always, thank you very much for your time. And we really do appreciate all the comments from both staff, the board, and the neighbors. And we don't have much to say about those, other than we'll go back and, and do our work and, and pay attention to everything we've heard. I did want to touch briefly on the prairie dog issues that were brought up tonight, mainly in regards to the comments about some type of verbal agreement. As, because as we've seen, the emails have been flying about this for a while. So I believe we have a copy of what a lot of people are speaking to in regards to a conversation that was captured in, in a, I think of either the Daily Camera or somewhere else in May 28th, 1999. And it clearly states in there from Stephen Hughes, who at the time was the president of Celestial, the member of the animal defense, asked Mr. Hughes, sorry, I gotta read here for a sec, to, could, could Celestial promise to not develop the property on which prairie dog colonies are found? Hugh said he couldn't make that promise because the company needs to have options for the future of this land. So we just wanted to bring that up because we've heard a lot about some type of verbal agreement into the, into the land. And I believe the speakers are referencing the same document. So that was our only true comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just, can I just say something in return? The, I, I, fair enough, I haven't done any research into the agreements that were or were not made, or how they were made or not made. But our, our land use, our land use regs do state that the prairie dog is a important part of our environment and needs to be protected. So it's not actually about the agreement, although I think that matters and should be tracked down. It is actually about what's in the land use code. And I'm done.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, we just wanted to clarify this one piece, since there seemed to be a lot of comments about, about the agreement. But thanks. And we'll, we'll continue working on it.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, guys. Dismissed. Thank you for the concept plan presentation. Okay, let's move on. I think we're just gonna touch on matters. And then we'll calendar check and get out. So are there any matters for the plant, from the planning board to start with? Okay, any matters from the director?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. And nothing from the city attorney?
Nothing from the city attorney.
Okay, thanks very much for, for, for everything tonight, guys. Tough meeting, long meeting. Appreciate the support. And, and Sarah, appreciate continuing to help with, with our technology here. It's, it's not easy. And I just want to reiterate our gratitude and, and continue to exhort people to just be patient because it's, it's tough. Lupita, do you want to say something?
Yes. It just, as you were speaking, I, I remember some of the comments regarding the discontent among some of the, our audience today regarding the format we assume, that some people are very unhappy and how it was not democratic and all of that. And
Lupita, can you hold on a sec? So that's a great topic for debrief. So everybody's good with matters. We really, I thought Sarah had something in the email that you wanted to bring up. You don't have anything, Sarah? Okay. All right, then. Let's just call it debrief. Keep going, Lupita.
Thank you. Because I just wanted to make sure, since we have Hella with us tonight, if she can kind of, you know, speak to, you know, is this something that is legitimately concerned? Because my understanding is that we don't have many choices. And to me, going to a meeting where we are asked to be staying at home, it is, that's not an option. To me, this is the best we can provide. And I wish we can find a way to kind of get everybody on board, that even if the technology is not up to par, because many things are not, that in some aspects, some people found this actually more accessible. Because joining us from home was easier than to join us on site when we had our meetings in the, in the municipal building. So there's positives and negatives, but I would like to at least think about this and, and get some feedback from, from Helen in terms of, are we really getting, is there a problem as you see it? And it's what, what can we do, you know, to make sure that we, we do them better? That's, that's all.
Yeah. I think, I think we all would prefer to be in a room with each other. Yeah, um, I think, I think we all would prefer to be in a room with each other. And it would make things a little bit easier. I don't really have concerns about moving forward in this format. Um, it was authorized by the city manager, so it's, it's authorized under the city laws. It's also compliant with Colorado Open Records laws. The Colorado Attorney General actually issued an opinion, um, that states that, that the Colorado Open Records law anticipates meetings to occur electronically. And, and as you all know, you even have to be careful when you write emails because those are, can become an open meeting and, and that's why you can't email about, um, business matters with more than two, two people. So you can have open meetings that are held electronically or over telephone or through some other means, and it is legal. Some things we're missing because we can't right now see the public as they're testifying. And I think you would all prefer to do that, but as Sarah explained at the beginning of the meetings, there are issues associated with that, that we're trying to deal with in the best way we can. Due process requires a meaningful opportunity to participate and in a timely manner. And it doesn't have to be the very best way. Um, and I think what we're doing does meet that. People can still email in their comments. That's how people usually contact the board, um, and they can still speak to you. And, and, and I think we've had more people attending this meeting than maybe any other meeting we've ever had before that at least I have participated in. And I, and I thought it went really well.
Yeah, I did too. And I, you know, I, I keep records of, uh, what people say and public comment. And we've never had this many public commenters as we did tonight. We had 63 or something. I closed my spreadsheet already.
Very small.
But it's, it was a lot and it was more than Hogan-Pancast. And, and I think that we've had a ton of, uh, complaints over the years about how the timing of the meeting makes it hard for working parents to come to the meetings. And now, you know, they can participate too. And, and I was also thinking about people who have, um, hearing impairment or, or who are, who have blindness. And, you know, it's, of course, it's a luxury to have good eyes and good ears and good senses and to be able to go in a room and get the feel of the room and see everything around you. But not everybody has that. And, um, and I think in a way this kind of levels the playing field and it's, um, it's been refreshing to me in some ways. I like being in a room with people too. But, um, but there's a whole new public process and a, a new kind of democracy opening up on, on Zoom. And I'm seeing more participation than I've seen in my whole time on the plane.
I wonder, I wonder if, um, whenever we go back to meeting in person, whether that is in fact in June or later, maybe we should be thinking about, as a city, how to maintain this option for folks who cannot, uh, take an entire Thursday evening to come and sit in the council chambers for two minutes of speaking, um, and make this a permanent part of the process.
I'll go ahead and, uh, jump in unless I'm stepping on someone else's speaking time. Yeah, so I, I agree. I, I think that, um, while much is lost by not being able to be with each other, um, access is gained for a lot of people in our community. So I think the criticisms of ways that it could be better are certainly fair and, and we're happy to hear them. And, um, my sincere, my belief, and I guess more, more even than I hope, but my belief is that there are a lot of companies who are probably working on how to make this even better, including Zoom, um, simply because the customer demand is present. So, um, I think we'll see things getting better over time. And then also I just wanted to, um, do it briefly so I don't take more of your time, but just give a huge shout out to staff who are, um, staffing not only our meetings until 11:23 at night, but, um, a huge variety of other public meetings and just covering stuff in a really Herculean effort and in a way that is going on and on for weeks and months, um, which can sometimes happen with some kinds of disasters. But, um, I, I know that you're past your initial adrenaline rush and now it's just kind of continuing. So, um, thank you guys for being here for us and everything you're doing to make these meetings work.
Well said, David?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much to staff. And I, I just had a couple of, um, comments about faces. I just want to make sure that, and there's still, uh, almost 60 people from the public on, so maybe some people will hear this. I've noticed that when I look at my face on the screen when I'm thinking hard on this platform, it kind of doesn't always look that animated. And so I just, I just wanted to tell the public, you know, when we're thinking hard, just because we look a little bit kind of, I don't know, that it, and maybe it's the same way on the podium, I don't know, but I just can see it because I can see our faces. It doesn't mean we're not listening, we're just listening so intently that we aren't maybe as animated as we could be. And it's just, I just kind of noticed that with this platform. So, uh, wanted to say that to the public. And the other thing I would just encourage, if there's any way, um, that we can find a secure way, and I know it's a challenge to just enable video on speakers from the public, uh, in the future. It'd be fantastic, but I know, I know it's, it's a concern. But, um, let's keep thinking about that if there's, uh, if there's something, because I just, um, I, I would love to see the faces when they're speaking.
Okay, great. All right, um, so like, y'all, let's out.
Please.
Hey, that's about a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Cindy.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Nice meeting, everybody.